Hugh Lou, Fatuma Said, Hawa Abdi, Marian Abdi. And again, if people didn't hear, Rick Fowler, Matt Kalal, A.J. Wilson, Hugh Lou, Fatuma Said, Hawa Abdi, and Marian Abdi. And if any of those folks are here, please come up. Becky Breedlove and Mark Tran.
Please go ahead. Good evening, esteemed board members of the San Diego Unified School District. My name is Mark Tran. I am a community youth organizer with Mid-City Can in City Heights. And I come before you today to ask you guys, implore you, to keep Crawford High School Educational Complex as a small school model. The data shows that test scores have risen, attendance has risen, and this is because of the small school model that's being implemented at Crawford. It would be a disservice to our students who have gone through this system to have you guys change and revert back and consolidate to a traditional high school. So I asked you to keep the school the way it is because it's working and you know, you got to do it for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Breedlove address on file. When I think about the directives you give to staff with perhaps not enough specificity and the amount of hours and therefore money spent by staff to research and get back to you with info that you end up feeling is off-base or inadequate, I feel sick. Case in point, school closures. A committee was established per your directive but without your guidance that spent untold hours over several months coming up with criteria and recommendations that you felt unable to abide by. What did that exercise cost financially and what did it cost emotionally as a result of the angst caused to parents, students, and staff? Crawford is now one of the few schools left in the yet-to-be-decided hopper. Should we accept that the decision to make us into a comprehensive school is inevitable as Sheila Jackson told us last night at our cluster meeting? Or should we continue to discuss options and be prepared to provide you with input according to the timeline you approved and that Deputy Superintendent Stover explained? Second case in point, we'll visit later tonight. Title one, I feel like a broken record.
Okay. Change isn't easy, but life is filled with change.
Could you give us your name, please?
Okay. Hi, my name is Marian Abdi. And I'm a sophomore currently attending Crawford High School. Last year, I went to Patrick Henry High and transitioning from a comprehensive to a small schools was one of the best decisions I made. The school is so diverse that it brings a comfortable environment. The class sizes are small, which makes it easier for the teachers to know our strengths and our weaknesses. They take the time to get to know what we need to work on. And I just want to say that it would be really nice if you guys could save our small schools because we're doing so well and we don't know what changes will come after if you guys make us back into a comprehensive school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hugh Lou. And I'm a junior at Crawford Champs. And I'm also a member in ACLU in our school. And the reason that I came here today is to speak out for me and my peers to save small school. And first off, if the school are combined together, then we will lost our math program and move off of THA, which is a national math program. And as you can see, our attendance at Crawford now and back then are way different because the attendance now has increased dramatically compared to the past. It was so low. And like most teachers say, if the school become a big school, then most teacher will leave. And if they leave, then different teacher will come in and take place. Different teachers, meaning we won't like school as much no more because different teachers, they don't know what we are capable of. And because of that, our attendance will go down like the past.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Is that everyone? Okay. Okay, well, I'd, we'll start with the formal part of the meeting. So I'd like to ask the Army JRC Color Guard from Madison High School to present the colors. Please stand.
Forward, forward, left, 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 right, 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 left, left, left. Color guard, halt. Outward, face, carry, colors. Present, colors.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry, colors. Right, face, order, colors. Trail, colors. Forward, march, left, 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 right, 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 left.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the November 8, 2011 regular meeting to order with four board members present. And I know that Ms. Jackson is on her way. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once the discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like our ASB student representatives to introduce themselves. And before they do that, I'd just like to, with Donna Good, the ASB president from Patrick Henry here, I would just like to, on behalf of, I know, the entire school district, congratulate your entire student body, Donna, for the vote that you took for your homecoming king and queen. Showed tremendous, you know, courage and a sense of, you know, what's right and a sense of community. And I know that unfortunately, some of you have been taken a little heat from that from some aspects of the public, but your student body took a courageous stand and that took a lot of leadership. And I'd like to, you know, just point that out and maybe we could give a hand to Donna.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Yeah, my ASB got the opportunity to hold something like that. And we saw it as a positive attribute to our school. And we let it run and it came out and we're all stoked. I mean, there's been negative feedback, but there's been mostly positive feedback. We're happy to hear it. Also, it's great to have you guys' support.
Absolutely.
On campus right now, we've just finished homecoming, as you just announced. But my ASB this weekend, on Sunday, will be volunteering for Miracle Babies. It's a walk for babies. And as well, my ASB council, or ASB district council, is preparing for our first student congress on the 16th of November.
All right. Thank you, Donna. And we've got Karen Cruz, the ASB president from Hoover High School. Karen?
Hi. My ASB right now, we just finished on suicide prevention week. It went absolutely great. We're getting ready to start working with Red Cross on our blood drives and we're hoping that they turn out great.
All right. Thank you, Karen. Okay, and are the Memorial folks here? You guys here? All right. Okay, so for our student presentation tonight from the San Diego High Cluster, we've got from the Memorial Prepory Academy for Scholars and Athletes, our principal Georgina Baraja-Sagire. And Georgina, do you want to introduce your student? This guy was sitting in the audience and it was a little unnerving looking out and seeing...
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Lauren Fillamore. She's our athletic director as well for Memorial, and I'd like to have her introduce our students.
All right.
She's also our ASB advisor.
Thank you, Georgina.
Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Fillamore, and I am the athletic director at Memorial Prep. I am also the ASB advisor as well as a physical education instructor. Today, you'll be hearing from our students, Victor Lieta, Jasmine Daniels, Jose Ruiz, April Orellola, Daniel Peña, and Ashley Mulali on the current things that are going on at Memorial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Victor Lieta. I'm in the eighth grade. I'm part of the school's flag football team. Also, I'm part of the school's site council, and I'm currently the boys' athletic commissioner of ASB. I've learned a lot about responsibility, commitment, and being a part of a team. Being an Eagle, I've learned a lot, and I'm proud of being one.
All right.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Daniels from Memorial Prep for Scholars and Athletes. I'm in seventh grade, and I participate in the ASB in cheer. Cheer is important because you learn to trust other students, be responsible, motivate our athletes, and develop social skills. Part of the social skills we learn is to work well with each other and live school spirit. One of our accomplishments in this year, we started the school year with six cheerleaders last year. And this year, we started with 18 cheerleaders.
Wow.
We have also been invited to present our schools at different districts and community events like the board meeting. My experiment, my, ugh, my experience of being a cheerleader has taught me to be a leader and respect others. I also really enjoy being a flyer on our squad because I get to have fun and face my fears of heights, which means that I become more cour- cour- ugh, um... courageous. Yeah, courageous too. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Brewer.
Hello, my name is Josean Hidri. I'm in the seventh grade at Memorial Prep and vice president of the ASB. I also play on Memorial's football team. Being in any sport helps us learn responsibility and how to be a team player. We learn to be responsible by keeping our grades up, not misbehaving, showing up for practice on time, and completing my tasks at the best of my ability. We have also learned about the value of respecting and getting along with people who are different from you. Because if you don't work as a team, then you'll be easily defeated. In conclusion, sports help us become better students and people in many different ways. Actually, I wish our school had a bigger athletic program and coaches so that more students could participate and stay out of trouble. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is April Orellola, and I'm in seventh grade. I'm going to talk about my participation in Cecil Travis Club. I wanted to join Cecil Travis Club because I wanted to become a leader. Another reason was to learn the values, which I'm going to name right now, in case you haven't heard about Cecil Travis Club. Teach someone, sacrifice for some others, help someone, know violence, we're all different, respect others, be proud, knowledge is power, be creative. Some of the great activities we participate in, in our marches, cleaning up our neighborhood, and fundraising for field trips. The Cecil Travis Club has helped me become a better student and person by building, by my confidence and wisdom. Just to let you know, I'm one of, I'm one of the two girls on the flag football team. Where I'm the co-captain of the A-team. We have two teams, A and B team. Our coach chose me because I'm leader and to show that girls can lead boys too. Some of the other sports we have... Some of the other sports we have in Memorial are basketball, volleyball, and soccer. Our girl soccer team even won the championship last year. Thank you for listening to my speech. Si se puede.
Hi, my name is Daniel Peña, and I participate in ASB football and the producer of MTV, which is Memorial, MTV is Memorial Television. Through MTV, we inform students about what's going on around school, like upcoming events, dances, rallies, et cetera. We also give public service announcements about various events, such as breast cancer awareness, drug awareness, and other holidays. This makes it easier for word to go around, and it helps conserve paper. As producer, I work with, I've worked with iMovie, iTunes, PowerPoint, and many more programs. I hope to accomplish a lot more with MTV and use the skills gained in my future endeavors. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Hello, San Diego School Board. My name is Asher Mulali, and I'm an eighth grade student at Memorial Prep. I'm here today to represent ASB. In ASB, we recently won a grant from NFL worth $10,000 from our Back to Football Friday event, which will now help us improve our athletics for Memorial Prep for Scholars and Athletes. Also, we received a $1,000 grant from Project Give, which we will use to give back to our community. Project Give is a program that allows students to really get involved in school because more than many students don't see a connection between school and life. So this program, so this program helps students see the connection. And not only am I ASB president, but I'm an SSC representative and a cheerleader. And with all these extracurriculars I have, I learned that you always need help. Like in cheer, you need to trust that your back spot and base will catch you. And in ASB, you need to count on your president, vice president, secretary, and head of publicity to complete their task on time. And just hope it comes out right. And with, and with SSC, you need to trust that your chairperson is on task and working, and trust that your secretary is taking minutes during meetings. But most importantly, the point is that no matter what sport, team, club, or elective you have, you, you need to remember that there's no I in team. And that's why I'm proud to say I'm a student at Memorial Prep. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time and for inviting us. We are very, very proud of all of our students and our staff. Thank you.
Georgina, congratulations on your team and what you've built just in a couple of years there. And we see it in your success of your numbers, but it's even more striking in seeing the success.
60-point API in two years.
That's right. Exactly. Great job, Georgina. All right. Superintendent Koba, your administrative assignments, information report.
Thank you, President Brewer. I have one appointment tonight. It is Andrew Grigorich from Principal Valencia Park to Principal Anjer Elementary, effective immediately. I'd like to proceed now with an update to the board, to the community, and staff as a whole. If I could, Cheryl, please project the PowerPoint presentation. We've had a series of discussions over the last couple of months about the budget, trying to address it from a number of different levels. The state consideration for what's going on, at the local level, and back and forth between the two dynamics that play themselves out. And I thought it was appropriate to continue that dialogue, to go forward and frame the budget from another perspective, just so that we can continue to think, to identify options, understand impacts as we go forward. And while we've explored a lot of different options, I want to point out that at some point, we decide or determine that we have to group the actions, the possibilities that we could have in trying to deal with the budget shortfalls. And we've got to deal with those options across a variety of scenarios until we have more in-depth, more firm information. So if we could, go on to the next slide, Cheryl. I only have nine slides, and I want to quickly cover some of the considerations, the factors that go with having a particular revenue shortfall, why we are in a situation where we've got to make cuts because we don't have enough funds to cover all of our operating expenditures. So we have to deal with what are the issues for projections. Secondly, deal with what could be the remedies used to overcome the shortfalls. And then to remind all of ourselves of the time compression, this disconnected process we operate in called the school district budget development cycle. Next slide, please. A key caveat that I have with the slides that follow is that any of the numbers that I display here are in fact subject to the calculations that the chief financial officer is doing right now with the first interim report. If you recall, there is a fiscal update that goes to the county and up to the state that reflects the period from 1 July, when we began the new fiscal year, all the way to 31 October. That grouping of monthly performance information on the financial side is called the first interim. The board must be briefed on it and accept the report no later than the 15th of December. So the numbers that we talk about, the shortfalls that we consider, are all absent of a final first interim report. But moving on from there, we need to consider that whatever we report in about 30 days then is subject to adjustments made by the governor. Governor Brown sometime around the 10th, 11th of January is going to issue his proposed budget for the 12, 13 timeframe, and that will undergo its own iteration until we finally adopt a budget by 30 June of 2012. There are a number of possibilities for different types of settings, different ways to look at the shortfalls that we would have to contend with in the next couple of years. I happen to have picked out here four scenarios. Some of this is just to get us thinking about the range of the shortfall that we have to deal with, and then to zero in on what could be the possibilities. These four scenarios are built around whether or not there are going to be mid-year cuts, whether or not there are going to be cost of living adjustments. So as you read down from the top one, it's a consideration that there would in fact be no mid-year cuts and that the state would accept a cost of living adjustment. This is the only known information we have now. We have been told, the board, I mean, the governor has not made a decision on mid-year cuts, so we have nothing to act on. Although we are certainly analyzing, assessing, and guessing at what's going to happen. We also know that we were told to build a budget that has a cost of living adjustment. Whether or not that holds is yet to be seen. I myself am somewhat pessimistic because we have not had a positive cost of living adjustment for a number of years. And while we've been directed to factor it in, there's no guarantee and there's no clear way ahead that says we will have a cost of living adjustment. But just in case, the only known scenario we have, this first one were to hold, we would in fact have that $60 million deficit to overcome to balance next year's budget and have a subsequent similar $60 million problem two years out in 13, 14. The next possibility is that there could be no mid-year cut. That's given that the revenue projections come in to protect public education. That means that at least $2 billion in projected revenue have been met in order to accommodate the state budget needs. If you factor in no mid-year cuts and also consider the likelihood that we will go another fourth or fifth year without a cost of living adjustment, then the reality we're dealing with is an $80 million problem right in front of us to balance out for next year. But with a slightly smaller challenge in 13, 14 of $53 million. I won't go into any depth with scenarios three and four, only to point out that scenario three talks about only doing mid-year cuts one time, and that magnifies our problem at $110 million because it's also offset by no COLA. That's the high end of this chart. The low end is also in this same scenario, which says that it would be followed by no follow-on mid-year cut and bring it down to 30 million. And then finally, the consideration for ongoing. These are variation on scenarios, and as I said at the front end of briefing this slide, there are probably other possibilities that could come to play. But what I want to do now is just walk us through what we have to consider if in fact we went with something like scenario two. But before we get there, I want to remind everybody of the mid-year cut solution. I first raised my great concern about this reality, or the possibility of it becoming a reality, back in October. And I stand by the fact that a mid-year cut is a tipping point for the school district. A mid-year cut plus no COLA just adds to a very large budget shortfall, which becomes incredibly challenging to meet without any and all kinds of options being brought to the table. But today, we don't have any information about the mid-year cut. We know we're waiting on for the Legislative Analyst Office, that nonpartisan expert source of assessment on state budgets, to issue a report sometime next week. This is the LAO's perspective on whether or not the governor should exercise his mid-year triggers. Followed by that mid-November report is another report coming from the Department of Finance about four weeks later, around the 15th of December. What we know today is that the governor will determine how to make his mid-year cut based on the more positive of these two assessments, the LEO in November, the Department of Finance in December. If in fact we do apply the mid-year cut, that $30 million figure that I've talked about in the past will come to play. And the only way we could deal with that mid-year set of remedies is what's in that boxed-in area at the bottom of this slide. We'd have to deal with the use of purchase-sale proceeds, which is one-time money, which is not a good thing to do, but sometimes a necessity. We'd also have to consume upwards of $24 million of our reserves. Again, not a viable long-term strategy. And then finally, consider what would have to be done with staffing. And upwards of 60 to 65 FTE in the classified ranks would have to be a part of our solution, at least as we know it today. And in order to proceed with any kind of layoff, we have to commence with HR issuing circulars to at least give a heads-up that this kind of staffing adjustment occurs. So that's to remind us all of what a mid-year cut solution would look like for San Diego Unified. If we could go on to the next slide. So let's pause for a moment and talk about how do you handle an $80 million problem as we know it right now. This slide depicts only a one-year solution. How do you just get by for another year? Not that I'm advocating for it, but this is what you would have to consider. In this scenario, there is no mid-year cut, but there is also no cost of living adjustment. How do we handle it? Well, what I've tried to group together here are two sets of potential actions. One is on the non-negotiable side, the kind of things that a school district with the concurrence of the board of trustees could act on. And it deals with either one-time fixes or reductions in staffing. I could have put any number of combinations on this page as long as I got to a total of $42 million in a non-negotiable for the sake of our conversation. But if you take a look at that $42 million non-negotiable strategy, it equates to somewhere around 350 to 400 FTE to make that happen. A second part to this kind of solution is the negotiable side. And that is in fact seeking trade-offs with our collective bargaining teams. Among the possibilities, continuing another five days of the furlough, which we've now exercised for two consecutive years. That would derive $17 million. And then perhaps a deferral of raises out there for a year or two. That would give us another $21 million. So you have two pieces, $42 million negotiable, $38 million non-negotiable, and you come up with an aggregated $80 million. If in fact you wanted to understand the problem in front of us in terms of layoffs, staffing adjustments, you could see that the upper portion is upwards of 400 FTE, translated into the non-negotiable area, and another 550 personnel or FTE to get to the equivalent of the $38 million in the lower portion. Overall, that combination suggests that we are in excess of 900 personnel impacted FTE in order to come up with an $80 million solution, a one-year fix. So if we could, go on to the next slide, Cheryl. So if we could, go on to the next slide, Cheryl. I've tried to take that thinking and frame it in a different way. What do we have to deal with here? It's truly only three buckets or three groupings of action at a high level unless there is some different possibility introduced at a later date. Our one-year snapshot for 12, 13 would mean that we'd have to deal in staff concessions, and you could see as you read across from left to right, staff concessions is about a $38 million piece, staff reductions about $26 million. And you can see that there is a variety of different program impacted. And then the $16 million is something I'm calling other solutions. And this is a variety of things. The one-time sale of property, in this case here, that 16 million could be perhaps a sale of the Barnard parcel or of a Mission Beach campus. It involves touching our insurance reserves, the adjustments we make based on actuarial studies. It could involve an enrollment plan that is characterized by incentives to move people to a less expensive program, and generating funding. Is that through leases? Is it through advertising? Any number of varieties, various actions. But if you look across those possibilities, without any additional deeper or prolonged consideration, we could probably cover an $80 million problem, but in all likelihood not be able to satisfy a follow-on problem of $53 million. What makes this more uncertain, or I would say trickier, is that as you look at the lower part of this chart, there are other unknowns to play themselves out yet. We hear some discussion, although not a lot of detailed thinking, about a state ballot measure sometime a year from now in November, perhaps seeking the voters to approve new revenues for education or for the state budget as a whole. That's an option. That's to be played out with more information to follow. What's to say there isn't another option dealing with concessions? We know that in order to accommodate mid-year cuts this year, that the state has authorized the school districts to add another seven-day furlough on top of what they authorized last year when they reduced the school year from 180 to 175 days. So a seven-day furlough addition would be a way of trading out that staff reductions of $26 million with $24 million, or state ballot measures, trading out perhaps the staff reductions. The point I want to make here is we have a very murky, uncertain way ahead. But when you start to group together what you can do, it comes down to only a handful, in this case, three buckets, I've called them. It's working with staff and concessions. It's working with layoffs or reductions, and it's trying to generate revenue, otherwise avoid costs that may not directly tie to a staff concession or staff layoff, a very uncertain grouping of possibilities. Okay, if we could, go to the next slide. If we took a two-year rather than a one-year look at how to resolve our problems, you have that same framework out there, the three buckets that I displayed. The only thing I've done different to accommodate this is increase the dollar value in at least a couple of those buckets. When I talk about staff concessions now on the extreme left, instead of having a $38 million remedy, perhaps it's a $50 million possibility. And the only difference here, in addition to the two-year solutions we're looking for for concessions, is perhaps aggressively pursuing further reduced healthcare options, perhaps capping and moving our folks to a Kaiser health-welfare program. In the staff reduction areas, instead of looking at about a $26 million solution set, perhaps it's higher, $10 million more at $36 million. And the only difference from the prior strategy is in the prior strategy, it was a partial reversal of class size reduction, that K3 formative grouping of grades. In this case here, we would actually increase and do the complete reversal of class size reduction. And moving in this area, we would now be talking about almost 500 layoffs. And then in the final bucket, the other solutions, I've not tinkered with that one, but certainly there could be some amount of adjustment here. And below there, you still see the fork in the road below staff reductions. Is there a ballot measure more than one? Is there a possibility for using the seven-day furlough option? All that plays itself out in the coming year, but the reality is just where is the skillsets and the options for exercising a shortfall mitigation strategy? If I could, go to the next slide. Even though we've talked about the significant impacts on our people, there are a number of unknowns that also have to be factored in. This past year, for the first time in a number of years, we had a sizable decline in enrollment. And with decline in enrollment comes some consideration for reducing staff. A one-and-a-half percent reduction equates on par to about 30 FTE being impacted. In other words, a decline or a reduction. We are sensing and hearing out of Washington that there will probably be reduced federal funding in the next year or two. We have been benefiting greatly for a long time on a stable, healthy Title I, Title I through IX funding pattern. But if in fact there is a small percentage to a medium-sized percentage reduction in Title I, that will impact on our FTE that we are now funding in the categorical section of our budget. And then a third dynamic to play itself out is that we, at any point in time, have a good number of our teachers, our credentialed staff in a leave of absence setting. And when we do that, we trade out people being on leave. We bring in folks to cover behind them for a limited period of time, and then people come back and people leave us. Well, in this movement of staff in and out of certain positions, it's never a clean match. You're chasing down credential fits. In some cases, you may be bringing back more people than you are leaving because of the way the credentials are playing themselves out. And then finally on this slide, and I don't believe this is an all-inclusive slide, but it shows you the movement of different factors that play with staffing, that we'd have to consider the additional FTE that were ruled to be retained by the administrative law judge. So different things come to play to create a more complicated staffing setting for the district. The last slide. With all that I just said about the way we would have to view our budget challenge in front of us, there is still an ongoing time sensitivity. We know that we are in a compressed period of time, even though we haven't got a lot of good information coming out of Sacramento right now. But headed towards December, we need to have the board briefed on how we will budget for our schools next year. This is that X-factor. How much money to allocate such that campuses, the school site councils, principals, and staff get together and make a decision on what to buy and what not. Other things that have to play, where do we finally go? What's the ultimate decision on the class size and the allocation associated with class size? We've talked about transportation at this point in time, have not moved forward on transportation. Similarly, with school closures, as we all know from last week, we greatly reduced our focus in this area, don't have a set of savings for this possibility as well. And then beyond that, Title I, we're going to talk about a little later. What does the support look like coming out of central office and program management support? And then there are clearly more options. I would argue that this is also not an all-inclusive slide, but what I wanted to present was where we are with a whole lot more to follow and how we could frame our thinking.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. We've got one speaker on this side. I'm Joan O'Hara. It's Joan here.
Hi, my name is Joan O'Hara, and I am the president of the Para-Educator Unit for CSCE. And you know everything about me.
We know you do.
I know it's time. I mean, I've been listening for a year and a half, and I believed Ron Little when he told me way back when, "You're running out of money." So I can't go back and say, "What if, should've, could've?" My problem is I'm not sure the public realizes what dire straits the schools are in, and they need to do something proactive. And perhaps they need to vote on them or talk to their representatives because the students are getting, as far as I can see, let me say, not a good education anymore. And that's the bottom line of all this. I'm not going to discuss anything about negotiations or concessions in this public forum. I find that special ed, I don't know how you can even possibly ask special ed. They're overworked. They're being put into places where they shouldn't be. They're job classes. Nobody cares what you're supposed to do. We want you to go in there and do this. You've got workman's comp costs. I can't, I could be here all day. When I really want to understand that you, the early '90s, I remember, well, I was way back then, still here, and they came down for special ed because the special ed students were not getting the services that they should have received. And when I see what's happening, I'm afraid that might happen again because the students are not being serviced the way they should be. We have vacancies that you're not filling yet. I don't mean you personally, but the district is not filling. So we don't have enough staff as it is. There's not enough money. As far as closures go, all of this, and you said it in June, if you have mid-year cuts, even if you have cuts next year, it's going to be your classified people. Well, you go into a school and you see people doing other people's jobs. You have desks that are empty. They have one person. Maybe there's somebody answering the phone. So parents, please, go to your school and see what's happening to it. It's just, they're falling apart. As it is, if you cut even this, people that work in this building, your management, you can't find anybody. They're overworked. And I'm sure they feel like me, just frustrated, and where's the end going to be? You need to get the state to give us more money. But please don't cut special ed anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you. Okay, let's move to board information reports. Mr. Beiser.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to start off by thanking everybody for your emails, words of support, prayers. As most of you know, my mother was diagnosed with lung cancer a month and a half ago, and it's very difficult, and I really appreciate everybody's support. Thank you. Just some information about some of the things that I've been focusing on lately. On Sunday, I walked in the Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure to support breast cancer, attended a San Diego Coast Keeper event to support making sure that we're really fighting for clean beaches and our bay. I'd also like to personally congratulate and publicly congratulate Patrick Henry High School for electing their homecoming king and queen. In the election, over 80% of the students participated, and from visiting with the principal, Pat Crowder, it was a landslide. I talked to several teachers and other students at the school, and they are very proud of the decision the students made, electing two lesbians who have been a couple for over two years, very popular students at Patrick Henry and very, very good citizens of the campus. And I think that this is very exciting for me because, boy, how times have changed from when I was in high school. And I think this shows that the students of today have a great respect for the diversity of our culture and our society, and I just want to thank Patrick Henry High School. And I'm honored to sit next to their student body president. The last point that I'd like to make is about the work that we're here today to do and every day, and that is to make sure we're providing a quality education for all of our children. To that point, we have got to make sure that our voices are heard in Sacramento. We here do not decide how much money we get. Sacramento and our representatives in the state assembly and the state senate and the governor, they decide how much money we get to educate our children. They need to know that we have got to have the resources to get the job done. Some naysayers feel that our teachers get paid too much, but the teachers in San Diego Unified School District, when compared to teachers in other school districts in our county, are already sacrificing tremendous amounts. We have got to make sure that we are supporting all of the support staff. A school is not a teacher and a principal. Somebody has to make sure the students get to school, are fed, and that there's somebody to clean the facility so it's a positive, safe learning environment. We had a packed house when the superintendent committee on school closures was being discussed. These same parents and community members have got to let their voices be heard in Sacramento so that we can make sure we have the resources to keep our schools open and keep our schools staffed. Thank you.
Okay. I think it's important when we start off our board meetings with the student presentations, and I think the students from Memorial Prep remind us tonight of why we're here and what we need to save. And from what I know about that school, it's seen some hard times in recent years and has really been turning around in the last couple of years, which is really a product of the reform that we have, the community-based reform that we have been bringing to the San Diego Unified School District. And I recall being at one meeting a couple of years ago at Memorial Prep with a huge turnout of parents who were very involved and concerned about the education of their children. And as Mr. Beiser pointed out, when we're talking about something like school closures, obviously, a huge number of people turn out. And I heard on the news that one, one school was planning a follow-up meeting to fight the closure of their schools, and as soon as their school was taken off the list, that meeting was canceled. And the reality is, we need to continue to fight for all of our neighborhood schools. One of the issues about the closure had to do with, we were talking about this morning in a workshop, about quality neighborhood schools, is that we have some schools that do not have a lot of attendance from their neighborhood, and we really need to address that. So this is an ongoing concern, not just a momentary crisis. And the point is that we're all in this together. This is the San Diego Unified School District. The San Diego Unified School District is actually very unique among school districts in the United States. We have usually some schools that are only the inner city, and we have others that are strictly suburban, and we really have a combination in San Diego. And the whole point is that we're all in this together. As Mr. Beiser also pointed out, we don't decide here on the board how much money we have, but all of us here do. We are all responsible for the funding of public schools, are responsible for the people we put in the legislature, responsible for what we let them know in terms of what our priorities are. So my point is that we just need to really continue to stick together as a united community.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Ms. Jackson, you caught your breath.
First of all, apologies for being late. Just very quickly, this coming Friday, we will, the district office is closed because we're celebrating a holiday. That's Veterans Day. And I really want to take a moment just to talk about our veterans. We have a lot of veterans. They're our largest percentage of people that are unemployed right now. So this weekend, as you enjoy festivities and parades that are honoring these people, don't forget that these people are struggling as well, and we need to make sure that we're looking out for them as well. The children, we will take care of when they come to the schools. But I just wanted to say that because I know that there's a lot of veterans, and some of them spoke earlier, I missed their presentation. But certainly, we need to be very cognizant of the veterans. They have given their time to serve our country and to their families who paid the highest price to lost members of their families while serving their country. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. And just very quickly to pick up on a couple of points. So Bernie Reineson, our chief of staff, and Monica Estros, our legislative director in Sacramento, and I made a visit up in Sacramento a couple of weeks ago. We went to talk to the staff of the governor's office, staff of the Speaker of the Assembly, people from the legislative analyst office, and some others. And we did it, what I thought was very powerful, we did it in combination with representatives from Los Angeles. from Los Angeles Unified School District and Santa Ana Unified School District. So we were carrying a message about, you know, the impact of the decisions that folks are going to need to make on all of the school districts throughout the state, especially the large urban districts like ours. A couple of important points in terms of where we need to focus our advocacy over the next couple of months. So as Superintendent Kova has pointed out a couple of times, a big decision is coming up within the next six weeks about whether or not the state is going to issue these mid-year cuts to schools. And we've seen in the superintendent's presentation, you know, the difference between trying to deal with a significant budget crisis and then trying to deal with a budget crisis that has mid-year cuts on top of it. And in a couple of weeks, November 16th, the Legislative Analyst Office, a nonpartisan office that works for the state legislature, will make an assessment about whether we're going to hit our revenue targets that would require us or not require us to do mid-year cuts to K-12. If the Legislative Analyst Office on November 16th says we don't need to do mid-year cuts, then that's it, there's no mid-year cuts. However, if the Legislative Analyst Office says we do need to do mid-year cuts, then the decision comes down to the governor, who has up to December 15th to make that decision. One of the, you know, not surprising, but unfortunate areas that everybody seemed to agree in Sacramento is that in the next two to six weeks, nobody is going to have the information that they need to make an accurate projection of whether we're going to hit our revenue targets for the year. So this incredibly important decision that's going to have, you know, such an impact not only on San Diego Unified, but on all school districts throughout the state, is going to be done with absolutely incomplete information. They're going to be trying to project for the entire, you know, rest of the fiscal year whether we're going to have revenue growth of $2 billion or more, when the, you know, the bulk of that revenue growth will come in the spring. It will come from our April tax receipts, it'll come from capital gains receipts. So what people are saying is, you know, when it comes time to decide whether or not to pull this trigger, whether we hit a $2 billion revenue growth target or not, they are going to be off potentially by $5 billion in either direction. So what that tells us, you know, as a united school community, is our voices absolutely need to be heard right now. This is not a technical, you know, decision that's going to be made by, you know, economists and finance people, this is a political decision. Do they want to pull a trigger on education, or do they not want to pull a trigger on education? Because they're going to have the data, you know, in either, in either direction, you know, to justify that decision. So we absolutely need to, over the next few weeks, be putting in our phone calls, our emails, to the governor's office especially, that we cannot take mid-year cuts to our school system. Governor's got to come up with it, with an alternative. Hopefully, the revenue projections look good and they don't have, but he's got to come up with an alternative to mid-year cuts. I'd say on the optimistic side, it's very clear that the governor and the leadership of the state legislature understand what Sacramento has done to our public schools over the last couple of years. We presented information that shows that since the economic crisis hit in 2008, K-12 has taken roughly a 15% cut from the state budget. All other parts of the state budget combined have grown by 8% since 2008. So, you know, you hear all the time, hey, well, we don't have any money, you know, what are we supposed to do? We've got to cut K-12, we don't have any money. Well, they've had enough money to support the entire rest of the state budget, but not K-12. It's about priorities. Now, I believe, you know, based on the conversations that we had, that the governor and the leadership and the legislature recognize that they need to start restoring revenue to K-12. I think, you know, when, again, when we look at the superintendent's projections, when we listen to Joan O'Hara, that's the only solution. The only solution at the end of the day is revenue growth. We have to get money back into our school system. We've lost too much, we can't just keep going with the same inadequate levels of funding that we're at right now while costs continue to rise, and we certainly can't take more cuts. So in addition to the advocacy against mid-year cuts, we've got to be sending our voice to the governor's office and to our local legislators. You need to start restoring funding to K-12 in your 1213 budget. K-12 has borne the brunt, our kids have borne the brunt of the state's budget crisis over the last several years. We can't bear that burden anymore, we've got to turn it around, we've got to bring revenue back into the, back into the schools. So as you focus your advocacy over the next few weeks, no mid-year cuts, and start bringing revenue back into our school system. Okay. All right. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Please move.
All right. Please vote. Okay, superintendent's consent agenda.
I want to pull item 25.
Got a request to pull items E11 and E25, and do we have any speakers on the consent Okay, speaking to item E25, we have Mark Clausen. Well, let's let the speaker speak now, and then we'll have our discussion later. Mark Clausen and Charles Berwanger.
All right, President Barrera, Superintendent Kova, my name is Mark Clausen, I'm a vice president with Arcadis. Arcadis is a large program, project, construction management firm. I'm here to talk about postponing the vote on item 25, and for a couple reasons. And one thing that I, when I saw up here tonight is the Cesar Chavez clubs, and we work with those clubs in a variety of scenarios, not only here but in Arizona. And, you know, knowledge is power, and I really like that, and what they're trying to do. And they also have buried into that a mentor program, where folks come back and they've got, and, you know, the college readiness and that is just fantastic. But that doesn't apply to a program like this. The proposition program, you know, is a, is a complex, complicated program. There's very few in this room who have managed, you know, $2 billion programs, I may be one of them, but there aren't very many, and they are complex. And the solutions for that are not simple. I think Ockman's razor, you know, said that all things being equal, you know, the easiest solution is the simplest solution. And in this case, you know, I've heard on the board agenda here that to select three firms, and one of the reasons being there may be a downturn in the, in the program in years coming forward. Well, that's true, but how you approach that is not simple. I think Einstein said, no simpler. He said, complex solutions, you know, complex problems need complex solutions. What we're doing is we've got, we've got an opportunity here. You've done an extensive selection process. You've selected six firms, and the opportunity you have here is to select six firms, not three. And the reason being this. The reason being this. You've got a great effort put in these proposals to extend out to disadvantaged business enterprises, disabled veterans, business enterprises. You've asked for this, and every team, every consultant team has put together an extensive list for you. What you've got is a bench. You've got a very, very strong bench as you go forward, and you can pull from this. You can ask for a resume anytime, and it has to be from one of those type firms, and you can, you can do fine. The other thing allows you to do is working with district staff. Because district staff, you've got a very talented group in there, you've got another group in there that wants to have more knowledge, consultants can do that knowledge transfer. And then as this goes forward, your best solution on this is to shave off the consultants, and you start working more and more with your district staff. And there's a way to do that. And what I'd like to do is have some further discussion on this over the next 30 days, and then get the board to a position where you understand this complex solution and take advantage of the opportunity you have before you. And with that, I'm finished. I couldn't bring 31 people here to talk to you, because we've got 31 members working on this right now. And I'd hate to see at the end of this month, 31 people go away and the impact on the program that that could cause. So there's a transition to this also. But I think it has to be thought through a little bit harder, and I think you have the solution in front of you, and I think it just needs a little more knowledge transfer from our standpoint to you before you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Berwanger.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Charles Berwanger. My business address is 101 West Broadway, San Diego. I'm here on behalf of Arcadis. I'm here to make three points. We filed a protest, and it was, I think, a last-ditch measure. We don't want to protest, but nonetheless, we kind of think we have to, to protect the interests of the district and Arcadis. The protest is concerned about the evaluation process that the, that was set up to evaluate the proposals, and also is concerned about the resulting decision not to include Arcadis. Public Contract Code Section 10345 provides that if, prior to an award, any bidder files a protest with the awarding state agency, and the district is a state agency, and the department against the awarding of the contract, the contract shall not be awarded until either the protest has been withdrawn or the department has decided the matter. Therefore, we request that this item be removed from the action items slated for board action. That in essence is our plea, and we will be submitting a more at length discussion of our concerns about the evaluation process, but in the meantime, we would hope that you will pull this item from, from your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I understand, are there other yelling speakers?
No, that's it.
I know Ms. Jackson pulled it, but the gentleman raised some serious questions, and instead of putting it at the end of the agenda, can we just get staff response and decide it now? Because the issues have been raised, they're fresh, I'd like to hear a response and then take action.
Pleasure of the board.
That's fine. Yep. Okay.
So I'd like to hear staff's response to, legal's response to what the gentleman said, and then hear Ms. Jackson's issues, since she pulled the item.
So I guess Mr. Shanky and Mr. Dolgeroff.
Primarily, the code section that the gentleman cited does not apply to the school district. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dolgeroff.
I don't, I just had the legal question, I didn't have a question from Stoller, so, unless you wanted to ask him more.
Okay.
I just wanted to respond to this.
Okay, well, why don't we start with Ms. Jackson?
Okay. I am going to ask that we pull this item and bring it back at a different, bring it back in two weeks, for a couple of reasons. First of all, I know that our staff told us today that because it's a professional contract, we do not have to go through any kind of process. We can just pick and choose whoever we want, and at $12 million, that sounds, you know, I have concerns about that. But nevertheless, we did have a process, and that process, I think, left out one of the key elements that we should have considered, and that is the staff that has been working with us. Now, some people will say that it is not appropriate for the people that have been with the district to give them any kind of consideration. I beg to differ. And when I first asked questions about this particular item, I asked questions because it was some things that I didn't know. But since then, some red flags have come up, and one that came up today was the fact that I was told we have 15 employees that would have to choose to go with somebody else in work or lose their jobs. I have since then heard that it is 31, I just heard it was 31. I heard it was 36, but I guess 31 is probably closest to the answer. I also asked today, what kind of system do we have in place to measure or evaluate any contracts that we go into? So the people that have been working for us, at least for the last three years, maybe even longer, have they been evaluated each and every year? So my concern is that we have people that have been doing, and what I found out between earlier today and now, a wonderful job at the district, that we're going to look at them in the eye, and we're going to tell them that you're going to have to either, if you want to stay with us, you have to go to work for someone else. I think that it's market manipulation, and I think that we need to have a further discussion about that. So my motion is that we table this item, bring it back at the next board meeting to give us an opportunity to look more in detail at this entire selection process.
Is there a second to Ms. Jackson's motion? Hearing none. I've got some questions, but is there a motion?
Let me move staff recommendation.
Okay, is there a second to staff's recommendation?
One second.
Okay, I'd like to ask some questions, Mr. Dolgeroff. Okay, so briefly, Lee, if you could walk us through the reason for opening up this process in the first place, and then what was the process used to select the firms that you're recommending tonight?
Well, the original contracts that are currently in place were awarded in January of 2009, and they were a one-year contract. They were extended a year later, and then a year after that, they were extended again. So at that extension, the board had asked us to recompete the, the contracts, and by that, I think the staff understood that that meant an open competition for every, for outside firms. And the three current vendors are URS, Arcadis, and Harris Turner. We, for this RFP, which is pretty standard, we, we, we received the proposals, we had a panel of six members that paper screened those proposals. They narrowed the field down to six finalists and recommended-
That panel was internal?
That panel was, was district staff, and all of them signed non-conflict of interest statements. The, and then, and then the next step was after those, that the shortlist was developed, kind of like the way we interview, we do human resources interview, you look, you paper screen the resumes, and then you do an interview. We conducted an interview which consisted of a presentation where the, the firms were presented their qualifications and experience, and then, and that was scored 15 points, and then they were asked seven questions, which are pretty standard questions about project management, construction management, inspection, and the elements of a capital facilities program. Those questions were also scored by the, by a panel. Now, this was a separate panel, a second panel, that included two Citizens Oversight Committee members, one member of another agency, Oatay Water District, and also of the Construction Management Association of America, and then two district staff, I was on the panel myself, and, and one other person. So there were five votes on that panel. The, I must say that the, the interviews, they were, all six firms are very highly qualified, and the, the competition was very close. It was very, it was a very tough decision for the panel, because they were all really good, and it really came down to, you know, good versus, or very good versus excellent interviews. And it was, it was a close, but, but the panel recommended the top three point getters for all, for the, for both the presentation and the question and answer round, and, and those, that recommendation is before you.
And what was the reason for, for selecting the top three?
Well, we have three right now, and that's working. We, I posed a question to our, our interview panel, I said, what, what do you think, you know, in terms of, you know, do we need two, do we need three, do we need four? No, you know, the panel overwhelmingly supported three as the right, you know, sort of the sweet spot. We, we're, we may experience some slowdown in the program, I'm very optimistic that we'll still, we'll be able to go out on the bond market and do, you know, 80 to 100 million dollars in the spring. So that would result in some slowdown, but I think three is an adequate number for our needs at this time in terms of capacity.
And have any promises been made to the staff of any of the firms that have competed for the?
We, we can't make those promises. We will obviously need some staff to fill those requirements, they're currently ongoing. There is a time period between now and the end of the current contracts, which is in January, and we will, we will need those requirements, and we will request resumes from the firms that, the firms that we have, that are selected, the board ultimately approves. And, and, you know, these types of contracts, staff often- And, you know, these types of contracts, staff often change, you know, they're consultant contracts, so staff go from contract to contract. So there is a possibility that some staff may ultimately decide to work for another firm, but that's outside of the district's control or interest.
Was there anything unusual or unique about this process as compared to other processes that the district might have used in the past to--
This is pretty much our standard, our A-standard process that we use. It's, I mean, Art Handby could probably speak to that and, you know, but it runs through our procurement office. It's managed by an individual in procurement. But, you know, we do architect selections in a similar manner. Sometimes we, if it's close, we request interviews of architects the same way we do in this manner. Engineers and other professional services, oftentimes, we just, we only use a paper screen because it just doesn't make sense to do that many interviews. But, you know, this is sort of the manner we've done in the past, so, you know.
Dr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Dolgeroff. I just want to follow up when Ms. Jackson talked about potentially 15 employees or possibly 31 employees. I just want to be clear in my understanding, these employees are employees of the contractors. They are not employees, direct employees of San Diego Unified School District, correct?
That's correct. Actually, there are 31 people that we are contracting through Arcadis at this time. However, 11 of those are subcontractors to Arcadis, at least that I'm aware, the numbers I'm aware of. I could be mistaken by one or two, but, so it's 20 Arcadis staff and then there are 11 people that are subcontracted consultants through Arcadis.
So these are individuals who have not been employed by the San Diego Unified School District?
That's correct.
They've been employed by a contractor with the understanding that they have, or whatever understanding they have as far as how long the contract is. And I'm understanding that in the future, if another contractor has an opening, it's a possibility that they would, they could pick them up and hire them, but that's purely a determination of the contractors because we are simply--
That's correct.
--subletting these services.
That's correct.
Okay.
I just want to clarify that point and so certainly, I think we understand that they are hired by the contractor, but this is one of the augmentation and when you go over there, and so please correct me, the person that does our scheduling, does the scheduling for the district for our projects, is that one of our staff or is that an augmented staff person? And how many schedulers do we have?
We have three people that do scheduling. I'm trying to remember offhand in different, for different areas.
It's okay. I don't want to belabor this anymore. My point is this, my point is that that staff is over there doing work that our people are not doing and they've been doing it for a number of years and they're the experts at doing it. So when we, if this vote goes the way, you know, the way the staff is recommending, then we're going to find ourselves having to replace those 31 people with different people, which will cause a delay in what we're doing because those people have to get caught up to speed. And the people that our current staff over there is not doing that work. So if, and I was just informed that the scheduler, the main scheduler, does not work, works for our contractor. So what I would also hope is that in the future, and this is my concern, which is why this came up several years ago, was that our district staff has to be in those key positions. It doesn't make sense to have augmented staff in key positions that when we change a contractor, we find ourselves with the most experienced people in our district belonging to a contractor. And now the experience is walking out the door or being forced to go big for somebody else. That is not our concern, Evans, I understand that, because they work for someone else. But my concern is not, it is about those employees, but it's about the effect that it has on the district. And that's why my motion, because I'm more concerned about the effect it has on the district and the programs that we have going on now than anything else. And it is going to cause a bump in those programs.
Do you anticipate a delay in the program that will be caused as a result of this?
Well, we have some continuity with the other, there are, two of the other firms were selected, so there is enough continuity.
And how many do they have? How many staff people do they have?
There's about, they're about evenly distributed. There's about another, say, 35 people or so.
Between the two?
Yeah. I don't have the exact number.
So more than half of them belong to this one company? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I want my Board, my peers to know the real deal here.
No, this is, they represent about, less than half, but, you know--
Almost half.
Yeah. But it is a fairly significant change, yes. Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further questions or comment? If not, please vote. Okay, thank you. And then, did we want to, item E11 was pulled. Do you want to wait until the end of the meeting or you want to just do this now?
Whatever E11 is.
Real quick. I pulled item E11 because this is essentially, we are paying raises of $30,000 to these, this year, to these employees. And at the last meeting, a couple of meetings ago, there was a proposal because of promotions by staff to give a raise to our attorney and the Board felt that we shouldn't be spending our money on raises, whereas on the same agenda, we spent about $20,000 in raises. So I just want to point out, we have ongoing reclassifications, promotions, and so forth in the budget every year, including about $12 million in Step and Column raises this year, which these aren't. This is a raise and I just think the Board members should be consistent. If they're saying it's inappropriate to pay raises, then it should be inappropriate at all times, not just because of particular positions, because of the political focus by people who are opposed to them. So I would recommend approval of item E11.
Is there a second? We have a motion to approve staff recommendation on item E11. I will second the motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, second.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion?
I was going to pull the whole agenda with it.
Okay. If no further discussion, please vote on item E11.
To approve it.
To approve the staff recommendation.
No, any motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
Right.
And is it the second? Second? Okay, please vote to approve the rest of the consent agenda. Okay, let's move on to item F1. This is our agreement with the City Heights Educational Collaborative, our extension of our memorandum of understanding.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, could we just, we've got one speaker, but Superintendent, do you just want to explain what we're approving tonight?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
What you have before you is what I would describe as the evolution of the City Heights Collaborative agreement. It is an MOU that delineates the roles of the Hoover Collaborative to focus on aligning more closely with our district initiatives, working with the district for common goals and assessments, and then targeting the work that Price Charities and San Diego State University provides for the three schools, Rosa Parks Elementary, Monroe Clark, and Hoover High School, targeting it so they are on the pathway for college and career success via the College Success Compact with San Diego State University. So this agreement has shifted from the past when it was really a document that had San Diego State and Price Charities supervising and administering at those campuses to a collaborative agreement where we are working together for common goals.
Right, thank you, Dr. Meyer.
I just, one question to clarify, because I know there was some discussion about this before. There are the three schools here, but there was some discussion about the entire cluster being included, I thought. Because I guess part of the problem is, obviously Hoover has various schools feeding into it, as does the middle school, but it's limited to these three schools.
The particular support is, but I can say the alignment with the new cluster structure with Mitzi Moreno over Area 5, they're working together with Price Charities as part of some of the supports that we saw at the last meeting, the community partnership. This particular document, however, is just for those three schools.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, we've got Tim Allen who would like to address this. Tim?
Thank you very much. I think Dr. Meyer explained the changes and the document you have in front of you is a direct result of a meeting I think we had last year where Member Jackson requested an update, actually, in a reporting structure so that we're able to discuss what's happening in the collaborative schools. And to clarify, the relationship between what the collaborative is and the action you took at the last meeting regarding the City Heights partnership for children. This is still, this is, I guess, a kind of a program within that, within that cluster. So we're retaining, at this point, we're retaining the structure of the three schools. However, we're working together and we even have a clause in there that does discuss the fact that if things change and cluster evolves, then we'll come back and discuss possible new arrangements.
Right, okay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and I believe a second?
Yes.
Yep. Any further discussion, please vote. All right, thanks. Thank you, Tim. Okay, let's move on to item F2. This is a first reading, so this is a non-action item and this is staff options and recommendations around our Title I school funding threshold increase.
Can I just ask, are we have two other items related to this on the agenda?
They've been moved to--
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. You are psychic as well as an efficient president.
There we go.
So we'll proceed with the first discussion of the phasing strategy. And what I'd like to do is have Ron Rodi speak and he's assisted by the CFO as necessary.
So probably don't need to go a lot of history with why we're here this evening discussing this item, but as pretty much all the community knows, that last December, nearly a year ago, the Board took action to raise the threshold from 40% to 75% and instructed that that would be phased in over a five-year period. And staff is directed to engage the community in implementation plans for that change. The direction to staff was not that they would engage the community in discussions about the actual threshold, but just about how it perhaps could be implemented. And we were also to come up with a plan about how to do that. So there are perhaps three different criteria that need to be addressed as we look at the implementation plan. One is the rate at which the threshold will be increased, so how many points per year, for example. Another is to look at the method that we allocate funding to schools. We know we've used tiers in the past. This year, we're using a sliding scale, so those are a couple of options we could continue to use, one of those. And then there's also a discussion about funding concentration. So how much different do you fund the highest poverty schools versus the lowest poverty schools within whatever range you're funding? So we'll look at those by example as we move forward. Here, we're looking at three possible options for phasing in and there's a couple others we haven't put on here. One would be a big bang, where you just do the whole thing in the first year. I don't think that was consistent with the Board direction. And of course, the other one, you could delay it all till the very final year of the five-year plan. We're not looking at either of those. So these are two conceptual models that we're looking at. Again, they're certainly just that. So the first one is an equal increase. We're moving from 40 to 75. That's 35 points of change divided by five years, so it would be an increase of seven points per year. And then we also have another option looking at larger, earlier changes. So in this example, we could increase by 10 points the first two years and then five points the following three years, again, getting those 35 points increase. And then the last one is if we increased smaller amounts in the first couple of years, as in this example, five percentage points, and then had larger increases toward the end. Going to look only by example here at the first one, this equal interval scale, if you will. And currently, we have 156 schools this year. We're funding down to the 40% level. If we increase that threshold by seven points each year, we can see that in 2012, 13, next year, going up to the 47% threshold, we would have 147 schools. And again, this is based on 2010, 11 data. It's just for example, we know that schools' percentages are going to fluctuate a little bit, so again, this is just an example. And therefore, we would have nine fewer schools funded in 2012, 13. And as we continue increasing by those seven points per year, the next year, we'd have 11 fewer schools at 136 and similarly 12 fewer the next year, 12 the following year, and then the last year, we'd have 15 and we'd end up at 97 schools. So that's just one way that we could implement the phase in over the years. If we did that, what we're looking at on this slide is schools, elementary schools only, that would fall out of Title I funding for each of those years of implementation. This information was contained in Appendix D as part of the O'Mankler Board Report. So at the very bottom, and the colors aren't very bright here, we have six schools that are shaded in blue and on the far right, you can see that they would fall out during the first year. The next year, we'd have four more schools, the following year, six, then 10, and then nine, just of the elementary schools. As part of our community outreach, we did conduct a survey, as you will recall. One of the questions on that survey asked survey respondents to indicate how they would like the phase in to occur. And just as a reminder, we did have about 4,300 responses to this survey and I know there have been some questions about people voting multiple times on the survey. We did an analysis of the online surveys and we did not find any evidence of that. We do know that there were a few occurrences where the same computer was used, because we can look at the IP addresses, but most of those were district computers, for example, could have been over at the Ballard Center where they had parents come in and multiple parents could sit down and do a survey at different times. But anyway, this is just for context, just to let you know that about 60% of the survey respondents favored the equal increase each year. Then we also have this decision to make about funding methods and the first two here, we're perhaps very familiar with. The first one is the tiers. Two years ago, we had three tiers where we started at 40, went up to 59. That was the bottom tier and then we had schools at 60 to 84%, a second tier, and the top tier was 85 and above. Sliding scale, we've implemented this year and in this example, we start with the highest poverty school at 99%. We allocate them a certain dollar amount. This year, it happens to be $425 and then with each decline in the percentage of students eligible, we reduced the per student allocation by $6. So 425 at 99%, 419 at 98%, et cetera, until we got down to our 40% schools and they were getting $71 per student. Another method we haven't talked about, you could just say we've got X number of students in all of our Title I schools, we're just going to take out the total amount that we're going to allocate to schools, divide it by the number of students and that would be a very simple allocation model. And then the last one that was brought up at a previous meeting was this potential grade span focus. We would still have to fund all of our schools at 75% and above so we could allocate a certain amount of money to them, but then we could also use some other part of our Title I dollars and just focus it on a particular grade span. And so you'll see an example later where we look at just doing elementary schools. Again, survey results and you can see that tiers favored here by our survey respondents and then the flat-finding model was second. So the examples we're going to look at are just a few of what could be, perhaps not an infinite number, but we could give you probably hundreds of different examples. So we tried to look at some conceptual ideas to frame the conversation. These scenarios are also in Appendix F, which was a separate appendix, and it presented all five scenarios in one document, so you could look across for one school and see them all in one place, whereas in the report, it was separated primarily just because of the page size. Each of the scenarios we're going to look at is based on only the schools at 75% and above, so that's an important criterion to remember. And we're not-- And we're not going to look at an example for the flat funding. So, in our tiers, we're going to look at where you have a relatively wide distribution between the high poverty and low poverty, and another one where there's not as much distinction, so there's less concentration, if you will, at the higher poverty schools. We'll also look at those examples for the sliding scale. Again, here is a slide from the survey results, and you can see that based on a question about the sliding scale, that a larger percentage of our respondents favored having a larger difference between the high and low poverty schools, so more concentration in high poverty schools versus a narrower difference in the funding level. Okay, so here's part of our first example, and this is using the tiers example. And on the left is scenario A, and here you can see that we have the top school tier being funded at $527 per student, and it's roughly twice that amount of the second tier at 263. In this example, we took 75 to 84 being a lower tier, and then 85 and above being an upper tier. Again, that's not written in stone. There's decisions that can be made if you want to use tiers, where those different cut points are. And as you can see, the top school, again, these are the elementary schools, was getting about 450, almost $460,000, and then the lowest school at 75% was getting the $263 per student, and was getting about $51,000. So, again, that's where we have a larger distribution or concentration of funds at the highest poverty schools and a relatively smaller amount at the lower. And then, in the right-hand side, scenario B, we can see that we only have a little over $100 difference between the top tier and the bottom tier, and you can see that there's a relatively smaller difference, or we decreased the funding for the highest poverty schools and actually increased it therefore for the lower poverty schools. In our example from two years ago, when we were funding all the way down to 40%, the top school in the elementary was getting about $380,000, and the lowest school at 40% was getting only $25,000 per school, or at that school. So, you can see, because we are moving the threshold up, even the lowest poverty school is getting considerably more money, because there's fewer schools over which to spread those dollars. Here, we're now turning to the sliding scale example, and again, just a reminder that we're only using in this example, schools at 75% and above. And again, here we're looking on the left side, where we have the difference, as we move down the percentages, by only $3 per student. So, at 99, we're starting at $478 per student, at 98, it would be 475, et cetera, and we can see the spread there and how much these different elementary schools would be getting. Then, on the right, we are looking at a much wider distribution again, so we have a $7 decrement or change per each percentage, and we can see that there's a relatively wider spread, more dollars going to our highest poverty schools and relatively fewer dollars going to our lower poverty schools. Again, these are just examples. We could have used $2, we could have used $8. There's flexibility in how this particular scale is set up. Then, the last example I want to show you is this grade span focus. So, in this example, we would be funding all schools at 75% and above. We would take a certain allocation, so my recollection is that we took approximately $21 million that we had allocated this year. We took $15 million of that and allocated that to the 75% and above schools, and then we took the other $6 million and allocated it only to the elementary schools that were from 40% up to 74%. So, in this example, you can see the top elementary schools, their relative dollar amounts at $434 per student, and then going down to $200 per student for those elementary schools only that were in the 40% up to 74%. And at this point, we are making one recommendation based on the data that is probably the easiest to understand, is just to use the equal interval increase going by seven points per year as we implement this plan.
Just for clarification, does your recommendation include the tier versus the sliding scale and the spans of...
We have not made a recommendation at that point regarding which method to use.
Okay. We've got a number of speakers. I'd like to call on the speakers and then go to board discussion. Thank you, Mr. Rodi. And we do have a large number of speakers, so we're going to limit it to one minute apiece. Benny Ochoa, Rebecca Jimenez, Georgina Baraja Sagire, Pat Washington, and Ramones Final.
Good evening. My name is Benny Ochoa. I'm here representing EFF. Several of us are here today, including students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members, to highlight the importance of carrying out the decision to make 75% the threshold for Title I funds. Today, you hear arguments on why we should delay action or scrap the idea altogether, and we might even hear of schools who have had success receiving Title I funds who would otherwise lose under the new plan. And they use those funds to narrow the achievement gap. However, it's not enough to pinpoint isolated success stories. The goal is not to be able to identify few schools that represent the exception. The goal is and should be to close the achievement gap across the entire district. In this economic climate, schools and districts are trying to find ways to mitigate shortfalls in the budget. However, it's incumbent on us to make sound decisions and focus on allocating already scarce resources where they have the biggest impact and reach the greatest number of students in need. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Georgina Baraja Sagire, and I spoke earlier, but I want to thank you for your time again. I'm the principal of Memorial Propertory for Scholars and Athletes. We currently have 554 students at Memorial, and 100% of them are economically disadvantaged. 60% of our students are English language learners. 20% of our students have IEPs. We have 22%...I mean, 22 students who are homeless, and we suspect that it's much higher than that, because a lot of our parents do not want to register themselves as homeless. We have been faced with many, many challenges, as Vice President John Lee Evans has stated. It's been a tough two years, but it's been a very rewarding two years, because in spite of high transgency of students, in spite of staffing cuts and transgency of staff, and finally being allocated our last teacher, you know, 31st of October, it's been a quite unique experience. In spite of also many of our parents having to be involved with work, they still come to many activities at our site, and we are still making gains. So, I would please really beg that we really reconsider how we use our Title I funds for some of our neediest students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Kova, Board President Barrera, and board members and staff. First of all, the survey that Ron Rodi talks about, I have documented to you that I have had people as far away as New York, all over California, in Virginia, complete that survey, and that Maggie Allington, my wife, and I have done that survey more than once from the comfort of our homes, because we have several computers and multiple email addresses. So, it is inaccurate to say that the survey is not horribly flawed. Now, what I was going to say is, that my name is Pat Washington, you know that, but I'm speaking as a member of the Lincoln-Morris Cluster, and one of the things I want to point out, particularly to people who keep saying, "You all do not decide how much money you get." We all agree with that, that's true, but trustee advisor and others, you decide how you spend the money you get. And one of the things you've done for over a decade is spread Title I funds over the entire district, when it was intended for the neediest students and the neediest communities and the neediest schools, stop flip-flopping on our kids.
Good afternoon, President Barrera, Superintendent Kova, members of the board, Ramones Final, Rosa Parks Elementary School. I was very happy when this board adopted, almost a year from now, the 75% Title I threshold and the five-year phasing process. The data shows that poverty schools are making progress in our district, and that needs to be celebrated, and much of it is the result of the board-wide policy of investing in small class size and other type of support. When these needy schools make progress, the whole district benefits. In 2010, my school, Rosa Parks, got out of program improvement, and that's a tremendous achievement for us. Part of that was based on the small class size and on Dr. Greer, 17 to 1, small class size student ratio. This kind of investment is what we need in high poverty schools, in order for us to make the kind of impact that we need to make to reduce the achievement gap.
Thank you.
So, please concentrate the funding so that we can make the kind of progress that this district needs in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Sarah Gerling, Wenda Vidrios, David Page, Carrie Christie, Ellen Nash.
Good evening, Honorable President of this board and members of the board. My name is Sarah Gerling, one parent of Marcus Gerling, a kindergartner at Cherokee Point Elementary in City Heights. There are others here from Cherokee Point as well. I stand in support of the current five-year phase-in plan. Tonight, you could hear impassioned pleas to look at Title I funds at some individual schools and what they've been able to do at those schools, between the 40% and 75%, and with their share, but I don't want you to just concentrate on those individual schools in your decision-making. I urge you to focus on the goal of reducing the achievement gap across the entire district. I think that's something we should all aim to one day be very proud of. I think you accomplished that by sticking to the five-year phase-in. All sides of this debate considered, we should have our sights on getting the critical funds to the schools with the highest need, like the school that my son goes to. That's why I'm here. My recommendation is to stay the course, reduce the gap across the entire district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wenda Vidrios. I'm here as a representative of the Crawford Cluster. I've also been on the District Advisory Council for many years, off and on. I was there last December when the council voted and discussed the threshold to go to 75%. I was the only member who raised my hand, was the only person in the whole room who said, "Yeah, this is a great idea," because the people in that room are not from Crawford. They don't see what it's like to be impacted by poverty. We cannot wait to get these very needy children the help they need. The vote was addressed this way, presented, "Do we want to go status quo or change it to 75%?" Status quo is what seems to be happening here tonight. Poor kids stay poor. They fail, they raise poor kids who fail. No Child Left Behind clearly states that these kids are the priority of this one fund. We aren't talking about everybody's money. One fund, which is a small percentage of the budget, we need it now for these kids. They need it desperately.
Thank you.
My name is David Page, Chair of the District Advisory Council. Specifically, we have many issues that have been brought up before. I don't see the solutions or answers in this week's board member reports. Still, the survey is based on no data, only feelings. Still, the district has admitted that it has no data to talk about the effectiveness of Title I in the schools it receives or don't receive the monies. The general data provided by the board and district report indicates that the 60 to 84% is the group that's impacted by not enough Title I money. The presentation does not show the collateral damage in the form of employment for these school sites. You won't be able to transfer all those employees that are lost through the loss of their Title I money into the schools gaining, because the student populations don't change. You only need one nurse, one counselor, and those types of things, so you're going to have employee losses. Also, we don't see the report of the collateral damage in the form of additional funds related to Title I, such as program improvement funds that are lost, state program improvement funds because they're in year three, or the SES, or transportation funds that are lost, nor do you see the funds that might not be there for state and state comp ed funds. And please look at the middle school scores. You didn't show on your slide that half of the middle schools in program will be lost of their Title I money. Please focus on your final product.
Hello, board. Good evening. My name's Carrie Christie, and I wasn't expecting to be able to be here tonight, so I'm going to try to do my best to ramble through my notes on my phone. First of all, thank you for your leadership. Second of all, I want to say that I represent Crawford Cluster. I'm an SSC member at Clay Elementary. I have a student also at Patrick Henry. I'm a parent of a student at Patrick Henry, because I'm not satisfied with what is going on over at Crawford Cluster. I also want to point out that I'm educated, I have facts, I know that you guys are supposedly like research, and that you like to make your decisions based on research, so I would highly recommend this book, Critical Issues in Education. I'm going to read a little bit until I run out of time. "You should raise the Title I threshold, because the inequality between the schools north of the eight versus south of the eight is inexcusable. Parents south of the eight wouldn't be busing their children far from home, north of the eight if the neighborhood schools had resources equal to those schools. Our neighborhood schools in the district need to have adequate resources to prepare all of our students in the 21st century."
Okay.
"And parents like me want to think of school as school and not like it's a commodity."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen Nash.
Hello, I'm Ellen Nash, and I represent pastors on point, which is a group of about 30 ministers in southeast community. The executive director, Pastor Wade Smith, couldn't be here today, so I'm representing them. And this topic on the threshold at 75% is something that is definitely welcome and needed in the southeast area with the schools there. We've been just grasping with issues with regard to Lincoln High School, where you have 95% of the kids performing, not even at proficiency in math, you have 85%, not even proficient in English, and as well as science. So, we have some issues that we're struggling with. Southeast schools, these are the same 25 court-identified schools under the Carlin case many, many years ago, that we are now experiencing an academic crisis. So, we ask that you would consider holding to your original decision that was voted on in December of the 75% threshold. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken Seaton-Msimaji, Lionel Smith, Gerald Brown, Linda Williams, Becky Breedlove.
Good evening, board members and staff. I am here because I have a granddaughter at Morris High School. Several of my kids graduated from there, and to be brief about this, we support the staff recommendation to go to 75% over the five-year threshold plan. Our goal should be to make every school, south of eight, north of eight, the same, and we got to stop busing kids over there, where they do worse than they would if they was at their neighborhood stool, and transfer all the bus money and everything else so that we can get to the real goal, instead of spreading it so thin that nobody gets any help. Thank you very much, and we're looking forward to continue working with you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lionel Smith. My address is on file. I'm here to speak about the Title I funds. Since the 80s, the Carlin case, these 23 schools in southeast San Diego was awarded by the judge, $50 million a year. You took that money and you spread it out the whole district, because you couldn't raise the test scores, and now you're taking Title I funds also and spreading them throughout the whole district. That money belongs to the poor kids, the kids... That money belongs to the poor kids, the kids of high poverty. If you want to close the achievement gap, put the money where it's needed and stop flip-flopping on what you said that you had voted on already. And do what is right for our kids because we will take it further if we have to. We would take it all the way to the state, and we would take it all the way to the federal court because this is their money. And it's just like if I go to the store on your money and tell you, "You can have hamburger while I'm eating filet mignon," off of your dollar. And we need to stop that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. You know me.
Good afternoon.
I am Gerald Brown. I am a part of the Lincoln-Morris Cluster. Let me start by saying in December 2010, the San Diego Unified Board of Trustees voted in favor. They made a courageous decision, especially Mr. Barnett that night, I recall, to devote in favor of raising the threshold of Title I to 75%. Title I is solely intended to provide a level playing field for minorities isolated, racially isolated, economically depressed students residing in schools that are located in economically-depressed communities. Title I's are to be solely, that means only, singular, exclusively used to supplement and not supplant education. Our children's need that fund. Someone earlier used the terminology about collateral damage. Well, our schools have been collateral damaged the entire time. We have had direct damage to our children. It is time that the San Diego Unified School District stop playing, stop flip-flopping, and really educate our children and use the funds to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I actually, the other speakers have signed up for item H3, so I guess, you know, it's a related topic. If you want to go ahead and make your comments now, we can just do that.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, School Board members, President Barrera, and Superintendent Koba, and district decision-makers. I'm Linda Williams, literacy support at Lindbergh Schweitzer Elementary. And I want to thank our Board Member John Lee Evans for his proposal to leave the Title I funding level at 40%. I sincerely hope that you will adopt that proposal when you vote, and here are some reasons why. In the past 30-plus years, I greatly enjoyed teaching fragile learners in our 100% Title I schools as a reading recovery teacher, and I can speak personally to the issue of how crucial that is, the Title I funds are in supporting the learning of the students at those schools. At the same time, let's please not forget about all the needy Title I students sitting in our classrooms at schools that happen to have less than 75% of those students in their schools. Those students' needs don't magically disappear. Please remember them. And although at one -- thank you very much.
Thank you.
Becky Breedlove, address on file. Last December, I was here for the board meeting, and I came afterwards to thank you for your courageous decision. The Crawford Cluster talked a lot in the spring about this decision, anticipating that you may want to flip-flop. And at that time, we came up with a position paper that we intended to bring forward to you. Last night at our cluster meeting, we revisited the issue and unanimously agreed that we are, as a cluster, in favor of maintaining the decision that you previously made and urged that you not flip-flop on that decision. I've noticed more than once that you are often impressed by the numbers of people that can fill the seats in this auditorium. Many of the parents in our community struggle financially to keep afloat and have jobs and childcare responsibilities and lack of transportation that makes it impossible for them to get to these meetings. That does not mean that they don't fervently care about their children. That does not mean that they want to have successful schools. Just because we don't have yellow shirts, we know that Marvin matters, but Crawford cares.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael Polterek, Harvey Lenett, Susan Levy, Gretchen Brunner, Brad Callahan.
Good evening, Board. My name is Michael Polterek, and I am a parent and a DAC representative in the Patrick Henry Cluster. Earlier, a gentleman made the comment about money belongs to poor kids. It does, regardless of where that kid goes to school. We will hear comments later about how larger schools have a significant number of kids that qualify for Title I. They're poor. They need the funds. The decision to divert those funds and take those desperately-needed dollars to support those programs that we've been utilizing to meet our API goals, meet our AYP goals, and close the achievement gaps, that need continues. By taking those funds away, we'll be unable to continue to make the significant progress that we have made over the recent past. Thank you very much.
Any one of you?
Good evening. Harvey Lenett, I am the SGT president at Lewis Middle School. I'm going to make this very brief. I'm giving you an example. We support Mr. Evans' proposal to continue things as they are because School X has a total of 550 students, all of whom meet the standard of FRL. They therefore are 100% Title I school and command the highest possible additional Title I funding. Our school has 1,000 students, of whom 550 students meet the threshold. At that school, it's 55%. So in the above example, the 550 low-income students at School X, the other school, get everything. The same nearly 500 students at our school get nothing. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brad Callahan. I'm the principal of Lewis Middle School. I'm speaking on behalf of the Patrick Henry High Cluster Council, on behalf of all K through 12 children. I heard something earlier about schools in poverty. Schools are not in poverty. Children are in poverty. I'd like you to keep that in mind as I speak. Our intent is that after reviewing this information, you'll reconsider the current plan of taking critical Title I dollars from our school with more than 40 but less than 75 impoverished children. The simple chart that we are holding up here before you demonstrates what the prior gentleman just said. I'm going to point out to the middle because that's Lewis, and I know that school the best. This chart compares Lewis to Wilson. Wilson has 571 students. Lewis has 1,080. It's almost the exact double number. The number of Title I students in Wilson is 554. The number of Title I students at Lewis is 546, almost the exact same number. The ranking for Wilson, because they are almost all Title I, is 97%. The ranking of Lewis last year was 51%. The per pupil amount for Wilson is $442 per student. At Lewis, it is 166. It is already almost three times lower. The allocation for Wilson was $244,000. $90,000 for Lewis, that's a difference of $154,000 for Wilson. We have the same amount of program improvement, excuse me, of Title I students. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Esteemed Board members, I'm Susan Levy. I'm the principal at Farb Middle School, and my colleague Stacy Jones, also representing the Sarah Cluster Council. You have before you a document that will show a couple of graphs that we wanted to talk to you about today. As members of Area 2 Sarah Cluster Council, we formally request that you reconsider the current plan of taking away the critical Title I dollars from schools with more than 40% for less than 75% impoverished children. We represent a cluster that has a very, very high number of military families, many of whom, and a great majority of whom, are on Title I, are qualified for Title I funding. Where many of the schools in the cluster service relatively the same number of high-needs, low-income students to schools receiving significantly more funding. The current sliding scale is already more than fair in regards to compensating schools with a higher overall percentage of impoverished children, and therefore, we ask you to raise that funding. All members of the Sarah Cluster Council agreed that the harm done by taking away these critical dollars from our school and our children far outweighs the benefits of giving those dollars to our children and our schools already receiving a significant number.
Thank you.
I just urge you to take a look at the graphs and the number of dollars that are being spent to support all students in that cluster.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members, and thank you for your time. My name is Gretchen Brunner, and I'm a parent at Lewis Middle School as well as a cluster representative on the Henry Cluster. We're talking about, and what we're fighting about, are the same students. They are the neediest students that are going to be underserved. The money needs to follow the student. And to reiterate what had been said earlier here, I ask that you either raise the funding level to an equal amount of dollars per child for the schools with more than 40% or at the very least, leave the current sliding scale in place. It doesn't matter that it's a needy community. It's talking about the neediest students and where those students are. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a couple of savvy veterans who signed up for both items, so we'll actually allow that. David Page and Pat Washington.
I didn't know they'd be combined, but it does make sense. The biggest issue here is for us is we had quite a conversation about representative governance on this board and whether we should add more board members. And here we come to a point where there's 32,000 students who brought money to the school district that are going to lose their share of it, even though it was smaller than the rest. And we're going to have three sitting board members vote to eliminate Title I money from their area freely, denying that money to their students that equal to $32,000. And we're watching.
Pat Washington. Good evening. I want to make a couple of quick points about money following the student because it's precisely what we're supposed to be trying to stop by making sure there's a quality school in every neighborhood. What's happening in schools south of eight is that parents are just like any other parent. They want the best education possible for their kids, so they're chasing that education across this district. Those Title I dollars, for example, that the person from Sarah talked about, that she said, "Sarah High," for example, let's think about that school. Their total enrollment is 2,014. Their resident enrollment, according to your records, is 1,048. Their non-resident enrollment is 966 students. What if every school in the San Diego Unified School District was truly a quality school? Those children would probably stay in their communities, be educated there. Raising the Title I threshold does that.
And Edith Smith. Edith?
Good afternoon. I did not sign up to speak on this item. I signed up to speak in public comment. Ms. Ward was perfectly aware of that, and she did not meet that opportunity. I don't think that she had the right to do that, and I would like to publicly file a complaint, and I'd like the superintendent and his staff to assist me as a community member in putting that in writing. Thank you.
Okay, so we're back to item F2, which again is a non-action item. So, and then we've got, Dr. Evans has an action item for item H3. So let me kind of ask the pleasure of the Board. I think we could either ask questions, get clarification about item F2, knowing that that's going to come back to us in a second reading, or we could go straight to Dr. Evans' motion, discuss that, and then potentially come back to item F2. So I would probably recommend going straight to Dr. Evans' motion and have that conversation, unless board members object.
We also do have the staff response to the --
I understand. Yeah. Okay, so hearing no objection, I think we'll move to Dr. Evans.
Okay. So we'll go to item H3. Let me just start. So I want to, just wasn't quite prepared, to, I want to present a motion, which is, and give an explanation for the motion, which is to continue the current weighted allocation thresholds, which include a strong priority for the schools that have a higher percentage of students living in poverty. First of all, I want to go over a few points about this, and then we can discuss it. To present the idea, and I do want to say I appreciate the tone of everybody who has been discussing this issue because this is a very important issue. And I have to say that my constituents are very divided on this because my constituents are all the students and parents and community members of all of San Diego. Just to give a little bit of a historical perspective on this, last December, the Board did vote to increase the threshold to 75% over a five-year period and also to investigate how Title I money is being spent. That's one of the few times on the Board when I actually abstained from the vote, and the reason for that was because I agreed with investigating how Title I money is spent and agreed, looking at where is the best level in terms of where the allocation threshold should be. But I did not agree with, before doing that, deciding arbitrarily at that point that the threshold would be 75%. That was to be followed up in April with a report. We got part of the report in April, and then we got part of the report back in November. And the results from that report, both by the staff and the Tiger Team reviewed, that it was determined that a lack of appropriate data precluded conducting an evaluation of the effectiveness of Title I funding. The Tiger Team determined that existing data cannot demonstrate the effectiveness of past expenditures on student achievement. So I looked at this with a very open mind. I know that we all agree that these funds are to help students who live in poverty. Students who, and we're not talking about the level of poverty. There's a definition of living in poverty on an economic scale, and then we're looking at the percentages at the different schools. One of the difficulties of getting the effectiveness of the funds is that there's so many elements that go into the achievement at the schools, including the staffing and everything else that's done at the particular schools. Another thing is that Title I is a very community-based program, which means that the decisions on how the funds are spent are decided at the school site level. So, you know, I have gone, I went through my mind in terms of where's the appropriate place to put it. Do we say 60-some percent? Because about 60% of San Diego students are living in poverty, so if it's above that, that's higher poverty, and below is lower. Do we say 50% because that's the majority? And in terms of investigating what has been done, just on a personal level, checking out situations, what's being done with the funds, there are great things are being done with these funds at schools that are 75%, 85% level, and at the 40% and the 50% level. I'll just use an example of one area that is in the district, which is Miramesa. Walker Elementary, I don't have the number right in front of me, but is either 60% or two-thirds. The vast majority of the students there are living in poverty, and they would be denied funds under this 75% threshold. Challenger Middle School is one that does welcome students from across the district. They have a very high API, and I don't usually talk about API numbers, but their API number for the low socioeconomic students is 823 because they are very welcoming and provide special programs for the students that have those needs. I do agree that we need to get to the point where those students are able to go to a school, a quality school, in their own neighborhood. And then we have Miramesa High School that has math intervention and other programs that are helping students who have the challenge of living in poverty. So there's information all over the place, and we just have to make a decision at the Board level about where the threshold should be. And I've had an open mind about it. I haven't found sufficient evidence that the schools at the 40% and 50% level are not using the funds sufficiently. I do favor, and I know some people disagree with this, I do favor the very heavily-weighted formula in terms of the schools that have higher poverty. So for example, currently at the 85% to 100% level, we're talking in the range of 300 to 341 to 425 per student. And then at the bottom, at the 40% to 59% level, we're talking about 71 to 100. And then at the bottom, at the 40 to 59 percent level, we're talking about 71 to 185. So it's not just, you know, a straight, the money is following the student. It really is based on the impact of the level of poverty at that school. So I think we all agree that these funds are to be used for students in poverty, but not just to use for students in poverty, but, excuse me, but to boost student achievement. We have to have more accountability at the district level in terms of, even though we can't dictate how the schools spend the funds, at least provide information about best practices in terms of the best ways to spend the funds. I think there are a lot of other ways, too, that the schools in poverty, besides Title I, need to be given priority in terms of having equity, including nursing allocations, safety allocations, and a lot of other areas, too. We need to continue working on this. But we are a San Diego Unified District. We have students who are living in poverty across the district, and we need to help all of them. And for that reason, I am moving that we continue with the current weighted allocation thresholds, which includes a strong priority for the highest poverty schools.
Okay, is there a second to Dr. Evans' motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Ms. Jackson?
First of all, I want to thank my peers for their courageous decision in December, because it truly was courageous. As we've heard, this has been a long, a lot of history behind this Title I, and I try to be very brief in my remarks, but I think we need to have the history lesson here. This district, and I keep hearing the word desperately needed in some areas harmed the schools, so let's call some harm to schools. This district, the schools that generate this money, the district decided that it would bring it all to the central office. They took money away from the schools that needed it. Morris went into state receivership because they took that money from Morris. It took us a long time to get the Title I funding back from the central office out to the schools. And when they did, they didn't concentrate it back where it was needed, they spread it across the district. Even though they did that, we have still managed to get Morris out of state receivership over the last couple of years. It took us a long time to do that. The harm that was done to those students can never be replaced, because they took away, and you see, these funds are used, they're used for nurses, they're used for counselors, they're used to help the neediest population. The pockets of poverty in this city is what generates these funds. And we get those funds, and now that, and I think, you know, eventually we did return them to the school sites. What's happening now is we have spread them so thin, people talk about the programs that they have at some schools and that welcome the kids coming from poverty levels. If these funds were returned to those schools, those schools could have those items there to help the students. We would have to put them on the bus in the morning. So the harm to desperately needed areas here, we talk about Morris, we talk about Crawford, we talk about San Diego High, we talk about the southern part of our district that, for some reason, continues to be neglected. Now, you heard about the Carlin case. And what this district did, even though they was found guilty of neglecting those schools, they said, "We will do better. Just let us monitor ourselves." And monitoring ourselves has not gotten us to do better. We don't have very many high achievement programs at Morris. Morris is finally getting some more AP courses. We don't have an IB program at any high school. South, I'm sorry, San Diego High has one there, but other than that, the rest of the area, there is none. AP courses, we're still struggling to get. All of those items are why parents are so, are trying to bust their kids out. But every year that I've been on the board at this dius, we've had this huge discussion about Title I. And the question is, our budget is very large. This is a very small part of our budget. And the reason that people fight so much over it is because it's the only monies that schools can use to truly help their students. Now, Dr. Evans, I can't support your motion, because I think that finally, the courageousness of the board is to put the money back into the schools where it is needed, so those schools can excel. We want a quality school in every neighborhood, and we say we don't have funding. We do have funding, but we choose not, we choose not to put the funding where it's needed. At some point in time, we have to stop talking about what it is that we want and move to an action point. And that is where we are now. And this is very, is very sensitive, because when you sit there, and I know that there are kids that go to other schools across this district and other communities having these, but you need to sit out there some morning, watching these children going to school, and think about the programs that they don't have. They don't have those programs that the parents, and their parents are working, so their parents don't necessarily have to come and ask for certain programs, but I do. I do. And that's why I'm advocating for the funds to be returned, for an increase in programs, because people say, "Well, just cut the busing." Well, I can't support cutting busing until you put quality education in the schools in the southern part of this district. So, and so, as I mentioned, the military, impact aid. I fought very hard for impact aid. So it's not that the military's families don't get additional fund. If you got military, you get impact aid. And earlier that I was going to Washington DC, we challenged and we pushed to make sure that we got our fair share of military aid for San Diego. And so there is additional funding for military families in addition to whatever they would get for living in poverty. The harm done to the schools. I don't see, you can look at the high schools, you can look at Lincoln, and you would say, as I mentioned earlier, 95 percent of the students are not proficient in mathematics. 95 percent. 95 percent. And they need support. That support comes from additional staffing. That support may have been that they had the Title I funds, but they didn't. Didn't have all of them, but entitled to. Okay? You can go to any school in some part of this district, and you'd be hard-pressed to find one that's having an API that's getting close to 700, over 700. That's the harm that's done to schools and those students. So if we want to do the right thing, let's have a quality school in every community, let's stick to our original decision, because this board was the first board in more than 10 years that said, "We're not going to talk about it, we're going to do it."
Mr. Burnett? I have a lot of questions for staff. Mr. Rhodey? First of all, I want to publicly apologize to staff for a comment I made at the last meeting about the breakdown, when I said at the last meeting that it was the first time we had had the breakdown between required and non-required funds, and that was incorrect. We'd received it in April, and so I apologize for that incorrect statement, and appreciate all the work you and others have done on these issues. I'm looking at the attachment one, which, now, this is dated April 6, but these are the numbers that are budgeted, I assume, were pretty much budgeted for the list of the breakdown of the basic summary, and it shows the $21 million allocations for schools, and then all the other factors. It was in a different format at the last meeting, but I'm assuming the numbers are essentially the same. First of all, I, you know, we're talking, the total funds are $43 million, as we know. The amount that is being discussed tonight in the threshold allocation is for about $21 million of that. And when we started this process a year ago, part of the process was to go back and see where the funds are being spent and where they're effective or not. Well, it's been rather, to say the least, disappointing and disheartening that between our internal resources and the Tiger teams, that we cannot state that dollars used a certain way, at least empirically, produce a better result. There's a lot of opinions as to what does and what doesn't, but, you know, ultimately, if we want to spend these monies effectively, we want to make sure they're going to work. And my concern is that, but if we, the transportation number, do you have the $6.5 million? We can understand transfer, is that true, three-fourths of that and use it for non-transportation purposes? Is that correct? And use it for tutoring, for after-school tutoring?
We have to spend 5 percent of our Title I funds on transportation, so we could flip-flop those numbers. The number that's here for SAS would essentially become the minimum amount that we could spend on transportation.
So the $2 million?
Yes.
So we could take the $6 million that's now for transportation, and that can go to, for the SAS tutoring contract?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm looking at the non-21 million, and I'm looking at ways we can put more money...
The non-21 million?
Right. The non-21 million. I mean, that's the, that's the part that we're allocating, but, you know, part of this whole process for me the last year was say, "Well, how do, what about the rest of the money?" That we're all ignoring the $20 million. So, you know, number one, I would like to, I would like to flip that, and I would, and so that's one of my things I'd like to do. And that means more money are going to go into schools that need it, $4 million more to those schools. Secondly, and I don't, I don't know if this is the right time to go, but I really would like to go through these individually and determine the impact. For instance, the Tiger team recommended that there be parent centers at campuses. Well, we're spending $360,000 for a parent center at the Ballad Center, and then another $400,000 for allocations of parents at schools. Can we send that money to the schools directly instead of to the Ballad Center? I mean, what I'm trying to say is, I would like to send, I'd like to go through all these and spend more money of these allocations directly to schools, especially in those areas that need it. So, you know, the question is, how do we go through that process? Because I'd like to go through these, and I, and whether, I mean, I hesitate to just simply amend Mr. Evans' motion and add these things, but that's certainly an approach I'm looking at. On the overall money issue, it's very disappointing, this whole called "south of eight, north of eight" discussion that goes on. This board this year spent another $30 million for class size reduction, and the funds pretty much went to schools south of eight. Over a majority of them. So when people say, so, but when that discussion came up, the board didn't say, "Well, wait a minute. Are we going to spread that money out equally among all the elementary schools in the district, all 125?" So, you know, there, this whole issue of equity, I think, is a concern, because that money goes primarily to schools south of eight, $30 million. $10 million more than we're spending on Title I. So if we want to have equity, shouldn't we spread that district-wide? Nobody's suggesting that. It would be absurd. So the point is, is that we can take any element of money and say, "Well, there's inequity." But I think inequity, a lot of it is in the eye of the beholder. Lincoln, Ms. Jackson said Lincoln said 5 percent proficiency in math. Is giving it $300,000 more or $1 million more in any way going to guarantee that proficiency is going to go up 5 percent, 10 percent, 20 percent, when we have no data to prove that how Title I dollars are spent impact academic performance?
We do have data to show the programs can help.
We do, but we don't know which ones do, and we don't have data to prove it.
And we don't have money for them yet.
Well, the point is, so I'm, when I started this process, I'd like to target Title I dollars on programs that work, but I don't know where they work, because there's no data to support it. So I will, until we develop a matrices that determines where dollars go and how they will impact performance, I don't think it's, makes sense to change the allocation formula. However, I would like to, as part of your motion, Mr. Evans, have the pupil transportation and be switched from $4 million to, from $4 million to, $2 million to $4 million. So if...
Well, let me respond to that in terms of amending the motion. This really does come back to what you brought up last December and what was being investigated in the meantime, is the money that goes to the schools and then the other money that's centrally allocated.
John, I'm sorry, I just, because I know that we have sort of an order here.
Okay.
It's just a question of amending the motion.
Right. That's what I was going to say. Okay. I'm just getting too wordy about it. Basically, that I would support amending the motion, that we look at all of the required reserve funds, the ones that you mentioned, and anything else on that list, and any of that money that could be transferred over to schools as opposed to centrally administered, be allocated exclusively to the highest poverty schools. So it would, when we have these formulas about where it goes, it would add on to the highest poverty schools, in which we have defined as the 75 percent and above. I know that there needs to be some work in terms of what that specific would be, but I'm just amending my motion to state that.
I would support that, because therefore, we could go through every one of these other items that are not part of the $21 million. We can get a detailed discussion of what the money is actually used for, and it may be, a lot of these are good programs. I don't want to arbitrarily say they shouldn't all be used, but we have $8 million or so that we can add to the schools. So if the motion would include to have the staff give a detailed analysis of where these broken down, with the intent that the board would look at allocating more of those funds to the high-poverty schools, then I could support the motion with that amendment, understanding we'd have to come back and review the specifics of it.
So you've agreed to amend the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Beiser?
This issue is very personal to me. I grew up in abject poverty. My mom and dad did a great job raising me and all my brothers and sisters with a lot of adversity. Many times, our electricity was turned off, water was turned off. For a long time, we lived in a tent, all seven of us. For a period of time in high school, we lived in a homeless shelter. I teach in a very high-poverty school down in National City in another school district. I see every day the kids in poverty, the homeless kids at my school, the kids who look like their uniforms haven't been washed in a couple of years. And so it's very important to me to try to help kids in poverty. I know that education is the hammer that breaks the poverty cycle for many of our kids, and the only hope they have is to get the extra support that Title I funds are intended to provide for them. I think everybody here in this school district, on the school board, all the staff, all the teachers, everybody, all the parents, all the members of the community in San Diego want to help kids in poverty. The question is, how do we do that? And that's where I've had the opportunity to really thoughtfully deliberate, visit lots of schools that would be affected by taking all of their Title I money away, to try to learn, what do they do with the small amount of Title I money that they do get under this current system? And that's kind of where I have, I have thought. We should help more kids in poverty, not less, because they're all our children in Taking money away from some kids in poverty is the essence, in the Bible, of robbing Peter to pay Paul, because there will be over 10,000 children... Because there will be over 10,000 children in poverty that will lose everything from Title I. There are thousands of kids that we're forgetting about that are living in poverty right now. We like to think that they'll be okay because some of the other kids in their classroom are wealthy, and that's just not true. The other misnomer, the misperception, is that the children in poverty in San Diego only live south of the eight. We have statistical data and evidence that has been presented that shows in Tierra Santa, some of those public schools have 44% of their children in poverty. Most of them live right there in Tierra Santa. People don't realize that. Tierra, go to Tierra Santa and drive around the neighborhoods, knock on some doors. You'll be surprised. There are lots, there are lots of apartment buildings with struggling families in Tierra Santa. And that's not to mention all the people in poverty that live in Claremont, San Carlos, Serra Mesa, and all, all north of the eight. So, we have got to wake up and realize that there are children in poverty all over this city that need help, need support, need extra tutoring, need support classes so that they can break that cycle of poverty, graduate from high school, and go on to college. That's what we have to do. The proposal tonight by Dr. Evans will continue to ensure higher allocations of money to higher percent poverty schools. So, really, what we're only talking about is a very small percent of the Title I monies that we receive that go to these schools that just happen to have 60% of their kids in poverty. That's really what we're talking about. Because the lion's share of the Title I monies that we receive already go to the high-poverty I asked months ago, where did 75% cutoff come from? Why not 50%? Why not 60%? Why not 70%? It does, I think that's kind of an arbitrary and capricious number. So, what I do sometimes is I try to look at data and research to inform. And I ask for, is there a research study that says at a certain percentage, that's the critical point? There's no data or no research to support the 75% is the magic cutoff number. There is data that shows that there are children in poverty all over our district that are improving in their levels of learning. We are reducing the achievement gap for socio-economically disadvantaged children with Title I monies in many of these schools. Some of our elementary schools north of the eight that have large numbers of kids in poverty, when you take a look at just that subgroup of kids in poverty, this, because they're able to get support classes after school or have extra support during the day, many of those children are performing with an academic performing, performance index of just of those kids in poverty over 800 API. That shows me that those resources are working for those kids. And to take that away, to take that away, I just don't think is the right thing to do for those children in poverty. This is a very difficult decision, I think, for a lot of people. Because as Dr. Evans said, my constituents are very divided on this issue. But I would like them to come and visit some of the kids in poverty north of the eight that live north of the eight, that need these limited resources so that they too can have a chance at breaking out of the poverty cycle. You've got to get out of the box. We have kids in poverty north of the eight. That is a fact and a reality. And until more and more people realize that, I am, I really think that we're, we're not ever going to heal this wound. Thank you.
Well, it's a bit of a disappointing, frankly, discussion that, that the board is having tonight because I can feel this board now backtracking on a commitment to equity that it had the courage to make, as Sheila said, for the first time in, in over a decade. I mean, let's, let's clarify a few issues here. Number one, no school in our district has the resources it needs to adequately educate our kids. No school. However, some schools are more lacking in resources than others. The, the proposal that we're talking about, that we have previously agreed to, phased in over five years, would mean that 59 schools, I think was the number, over five years would lose their Title I funding and 97 schools would gain additional Title I funding. I, I don't have the, the numbers of students in front of me, but I would guess that more students would gain from this phase-in plan than students who would lose out. There's no question that this is, you know, some, some schools, some students lose under this proposal, but some, some students in some schools gain. You know, we could say, "We're robbing Peter to pay Paul if we do this. If we don't do this, we're robbing Paul to pay Peter." Except, we're robbing more Pauls because there are more Pauls out there than Peters. So, the, the question is really, I mean, I, what do we, do we use our Title I funds to make the most impact on the, on the highest number of students that we can? That's the question. There's no, there's no, you know, we're not, there's no solution here that doesn't mean some kids lose out. The, the current, you know, status where we spread the money around means that students in the highest poverty schools, and not just the 75% threshold and above, but most of the schools that would benefit from, you know, from this transition are in the 85%, 90%, 95%, 100% of students in those schools are in poverty. So, if we choose to continue the allocation model, let's not pretend that we're doing right by all students. Of course, we're not. We're choosing to put resources into some schools to benefit some students at the expense of more schools and more students that live in the highest poverty areas. So, let's, there's no, there's no- Solution here that's, in a, in a sense, fair to everybody. We've got scarce resources. That's not fair to anybody. But when you have scarce resources, you have to prioritize. And you have to decide where are we going to spend the funds to have the greatest impact in the greatest number of kids for all of our kids? Because as Dr. Evans said, we all represent this entire district. I mean, in my sub-district, there are some schools that will lose, you know, as a result of this, and there will be more schools that will gain. In the entire district, there will be some schools that lose and there will be more schools and more students that gain. Unfortunately, that's the decision that we have to make when we have to make decisions about threshold levels. The, I don't think there's anybody on this board that would disagree with the idea that equal is not equitable. That we have to, that, that, that schools with higher percentages of, of poverty need more resources to do, you know, the job of educating their kids than schools with less poverty. I don't think anybody on this board would, would disagree with that statement. However, in, in our budget, in our billion-dollar general operating budget, which includes hundreds of millions of dollars in direct allocation to schools, this would be one of the few decisions, this $21 million out of a billion dollars would be one of the few decisions that this board actually makes to demonstrate that understanding that we all know is true. That, you know, if we were in a situation where schools could meet their basic needs across the district, we're not in that situation. But if we were in that situation, the conversation we should be having is not about this $21 million in Title I funding. The conversation we should be having is about our entire budget, including our general, our entire general fund unrestricted, where if you have a school with 100% of kids in poverty in city heights, say, an elementary school of 500 kids, and you have an elementary school of 500 kids in Scripps Ranch, and that school has 5% of kids in poverty, those two schools will get the exact same dollar-per-student allocation from our general fund unrestricted, the hundreds of millions of dollars. Those two schools will get the exact same dollar-per-student allocation. We should be talking about weighted budgets for schools.
Absolutely.
We should be talking about with all of our money, you know, how do we prioritize our resources so that the schools with the highest needs have the resources that they need to properly educate kids? We're not having that conversation tonight. We're having a conversation about, in the, in, in the situation where we ignore the hundreds of millions of dollars in our budget that could be going to, you know, prioritizing equity, we're narrowing this conversation down to $21 million. Where we know that schools that currently, you know, are at the 40% and above threshold, you know, are doing some things that help, you know, kids. And we know that schools that are at the 75% and above threshold are doing a little bit more or a lot more because they have the resources to do school-wide programs as opposed to programs that just target a few kids. One of the absolute red herrings, and I'm sorry, but it's a clear red herring in this argument, is this argument that, "Well, how can we change the threshold because we can't evaluate what programs are effective or not effective with Title I?" Well, as we know, there are real difficulties that we have as a school district in making allocations. We actually can't make allocations to schools based on an evaluation of whether they're effective or not. I think we would like to be in that situation, but we're not in that situation. So, whether we choose a 40% threshold or a 75% threshold, we've got no data either way to say that either one is more effective. So, you know, the idea that, "Well, but we don't know the effectiveness, let's study it more." That's, that's an argument to just, you know, justify not acting in, in, in the way that we've got a choice to act. That's, that's what, that's what that argument is. Scott, when we allocated that $30 million to keep class size, K to three class size at 24 to 1 average across the district, we did that across the district. We took some of that money, a very small portion of it, and I thank the board for, for doing that, to concentrate, you know, to keep class size at 20 to 1 in the, in the 90% and above high-poverty schools. That was great. So, now, we've taken, that's roughly $3 million out of our billion-dollar budget that we've committed to equity. What we're trying to do here is go the next $21 million and start to get, you know, to a situation of equity. But, you know, is 40%, is 75% an arbitrary number? Sure it is. But of course, 40% is an arbitrary number as well. So, and, and the difference between those two numbers, 40% is the minimum threshold that we can allocate Title I to. 75% is the maximum threshold that we can choose because schools above 75% have to get money. So, yeah. Any number that we choose is going to be arbitrary in that sense. We're currently at an arbitrary figure. But the arbitrary figure we're at right now does not demonstrate what we all, I think, understand and believe, that equity is about concentrating resources in the schools with the highest need. So, this is not about, we need to study the problem more because we don't get to decide how to allocate Title I based on whether a program is effective or not. We might all like to be in that situation, we're not in that situation. By choosing the status quo, we're not doing anything more to move towards accountability and effectiveness. By moving to 75%, the one, you know, data source that we do have, that we looked at last week, was that if you look at sort of three tiers of schools, you know, low-poverty schools, you know, sort of middle, schools in the middle and high-poverty schools, all of those schools in the last few years have done a good job in increasing their achievement rates. But the schools at the 85% and above have done the best job. They've grown at the highest percentages. So, we know that, you know, that schools in this high-poverty threshold are achieving great success. Doesn't mean that the rest of our schools aren't. But let's not pretend that if we put more, if we put more resources into high-poverty schools, that that money's somehow going to be wasted. That money's going to be well-spent because the schools are already proving their ability to raise test scores, to raise achievement levels, to be effective with the resources that they have. We also know that there are some critical points that our schools are going to face over the next few years. We talk about middle schools. We had a conversation earlier today where we focused a little bit on middle schools. Well, we've got schools like Mann and Roosevelt that have done an incredible job over the last few years at raising achievement levels. One of the reasons for that is because they've had the resources through the QEIA program to keep class size down. Those resources will run out in a couple of years. And where are we going to be? Are we going to have class sizes go right back up in, in Mann and Roosevelt, knowing full well that those lower class sizes make all the difference between whether students succeed in those schools and whether they don't? Are we going to allow that to happen? This is, with the very, you know, limited ability that we have to make choices about scarce resources, we can either make those choices in a way that have the most impact on the most students, or we can make choices in a way that kind of spread those resources around, fill needs, no question about it, but do not do justice to the schools that are taking on the biggest challenge in this district. And where we will see impact in the district-wide achievement gap is when we see the highest-poverty schools in the district continue to progress. That's where we're going to see growth or reduction in, in the achievement gap. So, you know, let's, let's not pretend that this decision is anything other than what it is. Everybody up here, of course, this is a tough decision. All five of us represent all the schools in our district. By choosing the status quo, we're going to hurt some kids. By moving to the 75% threshold, we're going to hurt some kids. However, if we choose the status quo, we're going to benefit a small number of kids. And if we increase to the 75% threshold and concentrate that money, we're going to benefit more kids. That's what this is about. So, I, you know, I appreciate the motion, but I certainly cannot support it.
I just want to clarify the motion because the motion is not for the status quo. The motion is to shift several million dollars that we currently are using for kids to sit on buses and to take that money and say they'll actually be targeting those kids for tutoring services. So, and then to look at all the others. So, I just want to make clear that the motion includes that action on the transportation side and that we're going to analyze then all of the other ones and then come back and, and that the savings based on your amendment would go to the highest poverty schools.
Let's be very clear about that. I just want to, because I just want to clarify-
I just want to ensure the motion-
I want to clarify the motion because I certainly did not understand the motion to be a specific action item, to shift the transportation resource-
Yes. It's what he added on.
That's what I asked.
Dr. Evans, did you understand the motion to include that specific action item?
It was to, first of all, in general, to direct the staff to divert as much of the reserve central funds as possible to school sites, which would go at, at the 75% and above level and-
Yeah, but that's, that's too vague.
And the specific example of that was the, the SES versus Transportation Fund in terms of flipping that from the 5%, 15% to 15%, 5% in the other direction. But also, direction to look at every other item, for the staff to look at every other item on that line to determine whether it would be reasonable to shift that to school sites and if so, that that would go- and if so, that that would go to the highest-poverty schools.
I just want to clarify this motion again. If this motion passes, the people who are voting this, for this motion are voting to reduce transportation services and to shift those funds to the complete non-accountable after-school programs funded by the SES support?
The complete non-accountable, you talk about accountability. We've spent hundreds of billions of dollars since the Great Society on poverty, and has, Lincoln is still at 5%. We have spent, you're saying--
Let me finish.
No, wait, Ms., let me finish.
Go ahead, please, finish, honey, please.
Let me finish. You're saying you don't give a damn whether, we know whether the money's effective or not.
Now, you're saying that because you're transferring money to programs that have absolutely no accountability.
There's no accountability in it? We don't, not, both our staff and an independent committee across the board said we have no idea whether how the money is spent is effective or not today. Part of the problem with why we, our education system is so screwed up in this country is because you're willing to spend money to have no idea whether it actually impacts student achievement or not.
Which is what you're proposing to do.
No, keeping, having a kid on a bus for two hours a day versus actually spending money for after-school programs--
No editorializing, I just want to be clear.
No, no, and, and I think it's important that we have this discussion to clarify, because I think you're making a very valid point. I'm certainly in favor of it being used at the school site versus, versus transportation. However, there is the issue of, since we're not able to offer our own services, that we have to contract outside for those. So, going to, back to the, originally with the amendment of the motion, and see if you support this or not, was, was to the first part of the motion the same--
Right.
And then the second part, to direct the staff to divert as much as the reserve central funds to the school sites as, as they determine is reasonable--
No.
--to go to the 75% level, and they would come back with us to report--
That wasn't the amendment. First of all, I'm not asking staff to determine what is reasonable, I, because they have, these are the allocations they're recommending now. What I'm saying is, beyond the transportation dollars, for them to come back and drill down exactly what the impact is of these dollars. And I just threw out, because the tiger team said, the parent centers. I'm not saying the Ballard Parent Center isn't good, or shouldn't stay. I'm just using example is, would it be better if we spent that $400,000 at the sites instead of at the Ballard Center? We need to have staff analyze those, I, and we need to make that decision on all of those, except for the transportation one. We contract, what, several hundred million dollars out to contracts in this district? And you're saying, and you're, so, to me, this is the key issue. So on the transportation one, the specific amendment that I would support is if the transportation dollars are shifted reversed, and then the other items have to be analyzed, and then brought back, and then we'll make individual decisions of those. So that's the amendment I would support for the motion to go ahead. Otherwise, I can't support the motion.
Do you accept that amendment to your motion?
No, the, I would only accept it as far as, I mean, I don't even have that list right in front of me right now, but--
It's in the package.
Okay. It is, is an analysis of, of every line item on the reserved central funds, and having that brought back for our, our approval to move ahead or not with each, each line item on there. Do you understand?
That sounds that you're not, it sounds like you're not accepting Mr. Barnett's amendment.
Amendment to the amendment.
Okay. I'm not going to commit to change, the, changing the current threshold unless there's at least a commitment on the transportation side to put more money directly for the students, and then I'm willing to analyze all the rest, but I'm not willing to, to commit now, this is a first reading, anyway, tonight.
Well, no, this is a motion.
He has his motion.
Right, well, we'll come back at the next meeting, but, yeah, I can't support it.
If it's nothing else.
All right, so Dr. Evans' motion, do you want to reiterate?
Yeah, I'll just, to continue the current weighted allocation thresholds, which include a strong priority for the highest percentage poverty schools, and to direct staff to do an analysis of all the funds on the reserve central funds that could be potentially diverted to school sites, and to bring those back to us, and then if, if they're brought back to us, the ones that we approve would be directed to the schools at the 75% level.
Okay, and that's the motion you're seconding, Mr. Boiser?
Yes.
Okay. So with no further discussion on this motion, I think we've got a lie.
Wait, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
You're saying that--
I wanted to make sure it's clear on what staff's action is on the rest of the, on these items, what you're asking staff to do.
Asking staff to determine every way that those funds on that approximately $8 million reserved central list that could be legally diverted to school sites, and, and to provide an analysis of that.
Okay, yeah, I will, I won't support the motion. I'd support it if the decision we make on the rest is part of this motion. So I would, if, if the motion fails, which I think it will, then I'll recommend we bring back this item with the staff analysis, and then if, and then determine the threshold at that time.
Let's vote on this motion, and we'll see. Okay, so, call question. Okay, that motion fails? Okay, Mr. Barnett, did you want to make a counter motion?
I, I move that we bring this item back at the, the next board meeting, or, well, which item, the threshold issue, that we revisit again at the next board meeting, along with an analysis by staff of all of these other non-school-site line items, and to give us potential reallocation options of those dollars.
The non-21 million dollars?
Right. And that we bring that back, and we reconsider all of those as part of the allocation formula at one time, and then make it as a package decision.
I'll second Mr. Barnett's motion.
Mr. Please restate the motion, to make sure--
Yeah, we're going to continue, we're going to continue the action on changing the threshold until the next meeting, or whenever staff can come back, and as part of that discussion, we will make a determination as part of that, whether we want to change the allocations of these other ones to school sites away from general education spending. And so it will be made as part of a holistic decision, both the threshold and the allocation of these funds in one decision. So otherwise, the, it's going to stay with the 75. And so I'm recommending we bring this item back at the next meeting, or whenever staff's prepared, to review the threshold issue with an analysis of the impact of non-site funds, and we'll make the final determination of those issues together.
Okay, I'll second if it's to reconsider the allocation along with an analysis from the staff of the non-reserved funds.
Right. Okay, we're, we're scheduled on--
On the 29th.
On the 29th to vote on a threshold allocation.
Yes.
We're going to have to make a decision. So I understand that, that Mr. Barnett's motion is, has that in mind, is directing us, or has in mind that we would make an actual decision on allocation on November 29. That's the motion that's been seconded. I oppose that motion, because we've, we've, we made a decision almost a year ago. We decided for the purposes of this year to allow schools, you know, to have a chance to transition, not to change the allocation. But we were very clear that going forward over five years, that allocation would begin to change, which means schools should have been planning. Schools that potentially could lose money should have been planning, schools that potentially could gain money should have been planning. So to go back and change that again means that we're, you know, interfering with the planning that's been going on at schools since we made this decision nearly a year ago. So I oppose the motion. Any further comments on, on the motion? If not--
No, well, no--
Oh, Ms. Jackson, yeah.
We, someone asked me to go back and view our last board meeting. They said, because we sit up here, and every other meeting we change our mind about something. Okay? And, and we have to remember that if we want people to have confidence in us, we have to be able to make decisions and stick with it. This item is scheduled to come back on the 29th. The staff has been working on this, staff has a recommendation, and I think we should entertain a recommendation when it comes back on the 29th. I think the, the flip-flopping back and forth is causing the public to lose more confidence in this board. Now, a comment was made earlier about schools that may be getting Title I money now that are not doing very well. And I would say what I said earlier. I think if those schools had received the money that they were entitled to when they, when they should have received it, they would be doing a lot better. It is very difficult, and we talked about equity before, equal is not equity. And in this district, for, for some reason, people want to say, we're going to divide things up equally, we're going to spread things out, and our responsibility is to make sure that each and every child is given the best education possible. Every year we squabble over this, this federal money, and it's getting smaller and smaller each year. The schools that really need this money, students continue to fail. And when someone came up here, they talked about, when you go look at No Child Left Behind, when you go look at why we have Title I funds, it's to improve the academic achievement of students. The money has to be concentrated where we have the greatest need for these academic achievement success of students. I know, and I want to clarify this, that we have pockets of poverty all over this city. I really, I know that. But what I'm talking about is money that this city gets because it has larger pockets of poverty, and that money should be concentrated there. But more specifically to the motion, which I understand the motion is that those items on that list, we've been asking the staff for years, again, for years, to look at how we're reallocating it, and see how much we can get back out to the schools. Last year you had me make a passionate plea about, you know, how much the central office really needs to have. It should send as much money as possible out to the schools. But again, they give us that list, and, you know, we, the board, approve it. I hope that when we get to the point that it did, that the staff brings forth how we allocate those funds again, that this board will have the courage that it has now to say, not only at 75%, but we're going to allocate the money back out to the school sites. I can't support the motion either.
Yeah, and I, I just want to make one other comment. I, and maybe you've looked at it for years, you guys have done a lot of things for years, or not done a lot of things for years. I want to change the way things, we're doing things, because they're not working on so many levels. One thing we do is we have no idea where we spend a lot of our money and what the effectiveness is. A billion dollars, we just don't know. And that's the frightening truth. Regarding my view, my specific position, I think that was the, a year ago, was the first board meeting that I was at, and you know what? I made an uneducated, ill-informed, knee-jerk, emotional decision a year ago without any data or any facts. That's, and you know what? And I've spent the last year reviewing Title, Tiger Teams, going to Tiger Teams, reviewing data and so forth, and I still don't have empirical data to make a decision, because this board has not said to our staff, we want you to measure how our money is used, whether it's how many kids actually ride our buses, or whether, which we don't know, or whether it's the effectiveness of Title I dollars. Yes, I, if I can quote President Obama, my position has evolved on this issue, because I made a decision a year ago, knee-jerk, emotional, without facts. And I've spent the last year, and the facts now make clear to me that, number one, I want to move every additional dollar outside of that $21 million to school sites. And I intend to scrutinize every single one of those and try to get as much of that $9 million to the school sites, to the highest school levels. And secondly, I don't believe there is enough data of, to make any radical change at this point. But I'm committed, if my colleagues are, to say, to say we need a system to measure the impact of how we use our dollars. Are we going to do that, or we, or not?
Sure, 75%, sure, most certainly. I'm there with you.
You know, this issue is very interesting, because I tend to think that if the Title I resources are spent on research-based supports, interventions, and things like that, that you can look at the socioeconomic sub-data and their API and see if it's making a difference. For example, Marvin Elementary School uses its very, very finite, small amount of Title I money for very effective supports for their kids in poverty. And if you just take a look at how those kids in poverty are performing as a subgroup, they're over 800 API. That's what we want for all of our kids in poverty. If you take a look at just the SARA cluster, for example, they have three literacy support classes in 7th and 8th grade alone. A literacy support class for struggling 6th graders, a math support class for 7th and 8th graders, and a parallel math class for 7th graders. And what the data is showing is they're making a lot of gains for their kids in poverty with a very small amount of money. And we want to take all of that money away. So those kids in poverty, thousands of kids in poverty that are getting very targeted intervention support to help them close the achievement gap, all that money's going to be gone. And if you take a look at some of the data that we're looking at from the Henry Cluster, and this was on that big poster, it's kind of hard to read, I think, Franklin Elementary has 200 kids in poverty. Vista Grande has 200 kids in poverty. Vista Grande will get nothing for those same 200 kids in poverty. Wilson High, Wilson Middle School, 500 kids in poverty. Lewis Middle School, 500 kids in poverty. Under the, if we don't vote to approve Dr. Evans' plan, the 500 kids in poverty that happen to go to Lewis Middle School will get nothing to help those kids achieve and break that cycle of poverty. And finally, Mission Bay High School has 1,100 kids in poverty. Patrick Henry High School has 1,100 kids in poverty. Patrick Henry High School will have $0 to support those same 1,100 kids in poverty. Nothing to help lift those kids out of poverty. Help them graduate from high school. Help them have an opportunity to go to college. That's the data that I'm using for my decision-making. So, you know, people might say, oh, we have data, we don't have data, but I'm looking at some very important data, which tells me that the right thing to do is that we should help more kids in poverty, not less. And to say that we want to spread the money out evenly is just not accurate. The proposal is very clear, that there's still going to be a very heavy graduated waiting program in certain schools as opposed to others. But the schools that just happen to have 60% of their kids in poverty are going to lose everything. And I don't think that's fair to all those kids and those parents and those families. So I, I support the motion, because I support any effort to do what is right to help kids in poverty. That's what we're doing. You know, President Barrera said, oh, but there's a lot of paws out there. But guess what? We have thousands of kids in poverty that need these intervention support services and classes, so they can learn to read and write and do arithmetic at grade level. Right now, they are going to be left behind, because we're going to pull the carpet out from under them. They're not going to get a penny. And we're going to take that little bit of money and give it to other schools that are already getting the lion's share of Title I funds. Again, I would encourage people that live south of the 8th to go visit any public school in Tierra Sanas and Carlos, Serra Mesa, and look at those kids. They look like the kids in your schools south of the 8th. The diversity, the socioeconomic status, it is the same. Thank you.
I just want to comment on, on the motion, which is, I don't see this at all as an issue of flip-flopping. I see this as an issue--
Allow the audience to do that, Mr. Barnett.
Just a minute. I see this as an issue of getting it right. And what I think, it's just important to point out, Mr. Barnett said this happened at his first meeting. At the second meeting he attended, which was in January, he came back and said, I want to find out where all that non-school-site money is going, and how that can be allocated. A lot of things happened, budget crisis, all kinds of things. We kept postponing and postponing. Staff was sent out and was talking, having meetings, just to talk about, well, how are we going to make this five-year phase-in plan? Are we going to do it 7% or 10%? Are we going to do it 7% or 10%?" And at the meetings I was at, the people didn't even know what Title I money was or what it was about, and they were being asked about, you know, to give this percentage. The issue, so the reason that we are addressing this in November of 2011 is because I really believe that Mr. Barnett's question in January wasn't fully answered. I mean, it was answered in terms of, okay, here, we do have some items in terms of, in April, these are what the reserve funds are, but we didn't really, whether it's the staff or the board not delving into it, we didn't really come up with an answer of, can more of the non-school funds be diverted to the schools, which would increase, you know, the money for the high-poverty schools? So I just think that's important to point out, and that's why I think we need to get all that right at the next meeting when we make our decision.
I don't know, if you abstain and then you vote yes, is that a flip-flop? Because I'm not sure you have a technical flip-flop.
No, it's stopping to think about it and then making a decision.
I think if the question was, should we ask staff to analyze the non-$21 million and determine how much of that money could be reallocated out to the schools? My guess is there would be a 5-0 vote in support of that. But that's not the motion. The motion is, in addition to that analysis and that consideration of the non-$21 million, it's to reconsider, you know, the allocation of the $21 million, which is why I can't support the motion. Okay, so with no further discussion, please vote on the motion. Okay. All right. Yeah, why don't we, well, we've got staff response to Title I Tiger Team recommendations. Why don't we take a break?
There isn't that much on the agenda.
There's not much left on the agenda. I think while we're with Title I, let's do this, and then we'll take a break. So Superintendent, this is the staff response, but it's Mr. Barnett and Mr. Beiser.
Well, the Title I Committee, Tiger Team made a presentation, and they made certain recommendations. Staff responded to those, although we held off there discussing the responses until this meeting. And then we were going to basically recommend, I mean, the staff basically supported pretty much all the recommendations of the Tiger Team with just a couple of minor items where they didn't quite agree. And so, Mr. Beiser and I would like to support the Tiger Team recommendations and the staff response, except for one item, and I'm looking for, oh, thank you. Where the, and we're not, the question was, and this is in this thing.
E1?
Yeah, and I think we may have it separate as well as in the packet. If you see, if you go through, and I don't want to take Mr. Rhodey's thunder, but I can tell he's thrilled to talk about Title I. But each page, there was a recommendation, and then the staff responded. And part of the, maybe we should, maybe you have a...
We don't have that.
Yeah. I think it's in our, well, it's E1.
It's not E1.
Well, tonight is H9.
Oh, H9? Okay, sorry.
Why don't we actually go through the PowerPoint, the staff response?
Okay, that would be good.
So who wants to?
Let him, well, why doesn't, you just do the responses to it, and then we can address them.
Thank you, Board. Good evening. We'll do this fairly quickly. Before we go through the responses, we just want to say that we appreciate the work that the Tiger Team did over the year. We commend them for their recommendations. To us, it looks like the recommendations center around two concerns. One is transparency, obviously, and the other is efficacy and measuring efficacy. We obviously agree that both are needed. As you know, we've been doing a lot of work over the past year with respect to transparency, especially fiscal transparency. I think you'll find that our recommendations, as Mr. Barnett mentioned, are in line with theirs. Obviously, the transparency issue is much easier to remedy and support than the efficacy and measuring the efficacy, which will take a little more time and thought and strategy. So having said that, we'll just walk through this very quickly. So with respect to the first set of recommendations, we do have financial reports. We print out, we process reports daily and weekly, and we will certainly support the sites with respect to posting those reports on their individual websites. If there's anything further that we can do to improve those reports, we will certainly work with the principal group in the area, SOUPs, to make them more effective and more user-friendly.
Should I grab?
Sure, let's move along.
Just go back to this for a sec. I just want to be clear on what we're, because I think there's a motion that's going to be made tonight to support this. I see this as an action item. So I just want to be clear what we're voting on, so...
Well, the goal is to accept the Tiger Team recommendations and the staff responses, except there's one area where we have a slight quibble. So that's our intention tonight.
I just want to clarify what we're voting on in this first area here. So what I'm reading is that the staff currently provides two reports. Are we asking the staff to do something more?
No, we're concurring with their response to every item, and if they say it's, we don't, then we agree, except for there will be an item later that there's a slight quibble.
Okay.
So we agree with the staff's response to that, and unless anyone wants to change it.
I think the reason it's kind of confusing to us is that this is an action item, and you have recommendations, which normally we vote on. But then I think what is happening is the recommendations that you have in bold print came from the Tiger Team, and the staff response is in your blueprint or italic. And so what we're wondering is, is there a motion, and where is that motion?
Yeah, we are going to, we're going to make a motion to support all of the staff's recommendations, which are approving the Tiger Team's recommendations, except for there's one quibble. So that's the motion we're going to make. And I can tell you what that is, or they could go through them. Does that clear?
Let's just quickly go.
That's why I thought you'd go through them.
Let's just quickly go through them, yeah.
So you know what they are.
Okay, so next slide, just a very brief, so to that point, I mean, some recommendations are actually more implementable than others. So with respect to the first recommendation, those reports exist. It's a matter of working with the principals to help them get them posted on the websites. The next recommendation is about adjusting our budget codes to not allow certain charges be charged against Title I. And I think that the short version of that is kind of an either-or. So if we, if we take a code out of the system, they won't be able to charge anything against that code. So for example, if we were to take the supply budget out and that object code, there would be nothing, they wouldn't be able to use that to charge supplies against. So we don't support necessarily that recommendation with respect to an all-or-nothing approach.
Our hope was that on that one, assuming we're going to bring back the IT thing in the next couple of months after the review, and part of that will hopefully help resolve issues like that through the IT fixes that we're going to come back with. So that wouldn't be an either-or. That's the hope. Once we spend that $15 million...
If I'm not getting wrong, is on page 15.1B, 15.1 that we're looking at, is the staff saying that they can't support this right now?
Yes, that's true. So actually, I think this is the beginning. If you go to the next slide, there's the actual responses.
We're agreeing with staff at this point, but we're hoping...
All right, got it.
I think that Director Foster will speak briefly to this recommendation.
So in the Tiger Team's work, they wanted to identify strategies versus just a resource that was Title I. They wanted to be able to group expenses together. So as part of maybe a reading strategy, they wanted to use the last four digits in that long string that we have of 32 digits to group together a strategy. So you might have a supply expense, some hourly expense, maybe even a teacher expense, that it would all be grouped together to say, "That's our reading strategy." So staff definitely can, with a list of codes, we can come up with those, and the schools then would code their expenditures to that, we'll call it a strategy. Our only concern at that level would be, that might be more work on the schools, but from reporting standpoint and from the availability of codes, we definitely could set those up. And then they even went further in this slide to save, to compare the SPSA and their goals and that, to see how they're following with strategies and how they're spending against those strategies.
Okay, so again, we're back to this sort of confusion, what we're voting on. Tiger Team made a recommendation. You're saying that the recommendation could be implemented. However, you're also saying that in the implementation, that might create extra work at the school site. So what are we voting on?
Well, we're recognizing that they're saying that, yes, monitoring how we actually spend our money and where it's going is going to take more work than ignoring where we're spending our money. Yes, we acknowledge that, and we need, we feel it's important to start monitoring that so then maybe we can actually see what strategies are effective on achievement.
Is this the only way that we can do this? I mean, I am concerned, if you're talking about adding more work to the people at the school site's plate, I am concerned. So is there another way that can be done? I mean, is this just them adding an extra number when they do something, or is this...
It will be an extra number, and I think there's a couple of concerns. One is, how extensive is the list, and therefore you introduce some error. But I think you also have the problem is you still don't get to that fidelity issue. You might know you've allocated dollars for a particular strategy, but you still don't know how you've implemented it. So I think elsewhere in the document, we talk about actually building another data collection system with our evaluations folks to actually get a better idea how things are being implemented so we can actually measure the effectiveness. So it's, in addition to the actual dollars allocated, we need to know something more about the implementation.
I don't mean to be, it seems like I don't understand, but I'm not, so is the staff saying for this particular item that you want to do this now, or you're going to do something different later?
This year, we have committed to building a data system, a tracking system, to actually measure the effectiveness of the various strategies at school.
But you don't want to do this now?
No, he does. Well, he doesn't want to, but he's committed.
Well, I'm...
Is it a good idea or not?
Yes. I mean, the question is that you, who, when we said this is the staff's, the staff's response, who on the staff developed these responses?
It was a joint response with the finance team.
The three of you?
Yes.
How about the area superintendents? How about a couple of principals? How about the people that had to really do this work?
Some other members were on the committee. They didn't attend the meetings that were called.
They didn't attend the meetings because they were busy at school sites?
We had principals attend the Tiger Team meetings, especially ones that deal a lot with Title I, and the Tiger Team recommended, made that recommendation. This comes back to the basic issue. Do we want to know where we spend our money or not?
Yes, we do. However, if we're going to make recommendations, the people who have to implement them should be part of ones that are saying, you know, what we're going to do.
They were.
If you're sitting here, no, what you're saying is that they were at the Tiger Team meeting. That's different from when these three people that just said, they read this one here, they said budget codes with four-digit trailings should be created, and they said, "Well, yes, we can do this in finance, but I think it might be extra work at the school sites." Did someone call in an area SOUP or principal and say, "What does this mean when it gets to the school site?" That's my point. My point is that I'm for accountability, but the people who have to do the job have to be part of the discussion when it happens and not be just told, "Here is something else that you're going to have to do." Because we, you know, so...
They were on the committee that made the recommendation that the Tiger Team made.
But Dr. Meyer, do you have any response to this?
Please.
Is this a good idea or not? How would principals react?
I'm sorry, I'm just...
I guess my response would be that certainly there should be representation to review the impact that monitoring takes away from the doing. But without the monitoring, you cannot make an informed decision about where the money's going. The four-digit budget code, I am looking at this, I admit, for the first time. To me, it seems very similar to what you do with the SPSA. So you write down the strategies, you attach it to the budget, and then you monitor. This would give us printouts, is that correct? This tracking system would give a printout so you would have a more clearly articulated use of the money. But I do have to say, I would need more information.
Can I, can I just ask this question? Mr. Stobbe, have you seen this document? Have you seen this document?
I've not reviewed it, no.
Okay, can I just simply ask that our executive team reviews this document and make sure that everyone that's going to be involved, you know, has true staff input so that when we approve something, we know that it had lots of lenses on it, big lenses, so that no one is feeling like we just developed something in a microscope and sent it out and forced it on schools? Is that okay, Superintendent?
Yes, we can do that, but let me share an observation. I have the presentation that was provided by the Tiger Team, the community folks, a couple of meetings ago. There were three pages of teachers, community folks, principals, a lot of diversity here. I just want to make sure we're aware of that. What the staff did was took all those recommendations from a very large and diverse group of folks and walked through it and provide you with a response as to whether or not it's doable. I mean, that's what we've done. I think we should all recognize that any level of accountability will require time and resources. So it's the degree to which we want to do the accountability piece of this. It's no doubt in my mind, if we create four-digit object codes, create special reports, and send them to the schools, the principal and the staff are going to have to review them, do some analysis of the effectiveness using that data, and make changes. I don't think you can get around that. We'll clearly take a look at these responses again, but I do think what the staff did was take a look at the diverse community recommendations and tell you whether or not they can do them. Do them now, do them at a later date. But I don't think we should discount the fact that they will require additional time and attention away from some amount of campus leadership to do the evaluation of the accountability.
I guess all I'm simply saying, and I'm aware of the long list of people that were at these meetings at various times, sometimes it was only two or three people, so I'm very well aware of that particular process. All I'm asking is that before, I'm uncomfortable, I can't speak for any of the board members, I'm uncomfortable approving recommendations that I am not sure that the executive team that we have in place reviewed them and understand the total impact. I am for accountability. I am for moving these things forward. But I think that if our executive staff here are saying they haven't even had a chance to review it, to me, that is a concern, okay? As well as a concern from our area superintendents that are working with the principals. I appreciate all the hard work we're doing here and the information, but as we go through these things and we look at the posting of budgets, the training of people, and certainly, I can agree with most of them, but the question is, what is the impact on the district? Does everyone in the district understand the impact? And I'm using the same thing as when we did the, we haven't seen it back, which is good, the draft of this district-wide discipline plan. And what we said was that it's been, it was developed with a lot of people's eyes on it, but now let's send it out to the working people to get that final looksee before we approve it, so people know what's coming. And that's all I'm just asking, is can we have people, you guys are great.
Could I just add that, to reiterate the superintendent's point, these were not intended to be our recommendations. These were responses from staff with respect to the recommendations that the Tiger Team was making. We did have a committee. On that committee were two area superintendents. It could have been more broad-based.
This is information for us, and I'm okay.
But this is simply our response to the recommendations that the Tiger Team made.
Is this information tonight, then?
Well, it's not information because it sounds like it's a motion, and again, it's, that's what's difficult about each of these, section by section. The Tiger Team is a process that, you know, anybody who wants to get involved and put time into an issue can get involved and put time into an issue. And that's great, and people put tremendous amount of time and effort. However, the, I think when we, in order, for me at least, to feel comfortable voting to approve recommendations, what I'm looking for in the staff response is not whether or not the Tiger Team's recommendation can be done... whether or not the Tiger Team's recommendation can be done, I'm looking for staff's recommendation about whether it should be done. Because, you know, it's, the point of vetting these, you know, ideas through the staff is to, you know, we've got people who do this for a living.
Well, let's continue, let's continue it, because the intent is for the staff to review the Tiger Team's and give their best professional recommendation as to what they agree with and what they don't, and then the board ultimately makes a decision. So why don't we continue it and give, until staff has time to give specific recommendations.
Okay.
I just want to say, you were talking about a break, but.
Do you want to just?
I move that we approve H4 to H8.
Okay, hold on.
Well, I can see the titles.
Okay, look at the titles. There are things that we've discussed.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Okay, administrators.
Right.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve items H4 through H8. Any discussion?
Yeah, I can do those.
If not, please vote. Okay, why don't we?
Then we just have, that's pretty much, except the back page.
Well, we still, yeah, sorry, we've got different agendas. Let's, let's actually have a little bit of a discussion on item F3. This is an important item. This is the.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dallow.
The bullying, harassment, intimidation, so why don't we, Superintendent and Dr. Meyer?
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Meyer. If you remember, the policy was approved by the board last spring. Follow-on action was to now build the implementing procedure, and the task force has been working at this over the last several months, and doing a lot of comparative work, and also conferring with other sources or guidance on, on this whole idea, preventing, correcting, detecting, educating. So I'm gonna turn it over to Nellie at this point.
As the superintendent mentioned, in October of 2010, a policy was created that was an anti-bullying policy. This particular policy called out specific federally mandated groups that are protected classes. And in particular, it was spurred because of the recent tragedies that had occurred with young people who were taking their lives, who were bullied, particularly those in the gay and lesbian transgender community. That being said, over the last year, after we were directed to convene the task force, we worked together with Dr. Dolores Jacobs, the CEO of the center, to create policy and procedure that specifically will look at prevention, reporting, and intervention. And a key component within that will also be the training that will go to the schools. So as part of that, what you have in, in front of you on item F3 includes the collective work of this group who has been working on this procedure for nearly a year. And this group included community members, staff members, school site personnel, city officials. And so it was a very widespread group, and the work that, that you're seeing there includes what we're going to do as far as the procedure. And once it's approved, we will then work on developing further curriculum that is aligned with this particular procedure, as well as staff training, and in addition, also a comprehensive implementation plan. So this, this particular, excuse me, particular item will lead us to support the implementation plan. Yes?
I just had one question on the flow chart that's on, is the very, let's see, does it have a patient on it? I'm sorry. Is the flow chart, it follows the victim declaration and counseling, and it looks like this, Cheryl, in case you're looking for it? Okay. And, and so I was trying to follow along with it, and I had a question mark, because it seemed like, the question mark was about this school log book, and, and so, just for the public information, it goes from a person being injured to witness report, staff, a staff begins investigation, interviews of victims, and then it says, obtain written statements, take appropriate discipline action, provide intervention strategies, contact parents or guardians, follow up with school police if, if involved. And then it says, enters incident on the Zangal behavior tracking. Okay? And then it says, complete incident bullying investigative report, and then enter it to the school log. So I think I had stopped there because it, you're entering it three different places. And with all of our computer savvy, I would think we'd be able to enter it into one place. So can you, so I put a question mark there, because it seems like they got a lot of repeat, having to go enter it here, having to go enter it there, and is it a possible way to streamline this, so it's not, you know, additional burden? Sorry.
We discussed that Zangal would be the primary place where we're entering it into the computer, but one of those boxes is for the incident report that is actually written out by hand. And we followed the same report that is used in the disciplinary witness report, so it's very simple and it's readily accessible. And then one other thing that the group came up with was that we wanted to have a centralized tracking place for the, the reports. So Zangal would be accessible to the centralized department, and we determined that the race human relations department would be the place where they would monitor it, give reports to the superintendent, so we could track effectively incidents where we have high rates of bullying, places where we have success, and we could monitor our implementation of the program.
So yes, my question was, if you have it at Zangal, and you have the incident school investigative report, what is the purpose for the school log book? What's the, yeah?
You know, part of the reason that we have the school log, and perhaps it is redundant, as I believe you're inferring, the school log was mirroring the same practice that we had for the sexual harassment reporting, and so we really just followed along the exact same steps that we had in place that we've already trained staff in, in using. So for that reason, we do have a, a sexual harassment log that we keep on each campus, and the principal has in a confidential file. So we started by really wanting to mirror the same process.
So Dr. Meyer, can I ask, so just, you know, taking a few steps back, how does the, the policy that you're recommending tonight, how does it make students safer? And compared to what we're currently doing, and I know that part of the task force, you know, looked at other districts and other policies, and you tried to kind of, you know, you know, pull together what you thought were the, the best ideas from around the country. So what are some of the key ideas here?
Well, the biggest key idea is the idea of the prevention. And we've started with a very clearly articulated message from the superintendent that will go out to every single school, emphasizing the focus on getting rid of bullying at all campuses. We also are working on curriculum as part of, part of the prevention that will work with the student who is bullying, as well as the student who, I mean, as well as the bullied. So this, this new look at the student who is doing the bullying, to try and turn that behavior around, is really part of that prevention program. As we go through, what we, what we found out when we analyzed our schools across the district, we had many successful programs, and we brought them before the, the board. We had Madison's, we've had Henry's, we've had a lot of them. But what we haven't had is a district-wide procedure that brings those ideas forward, that shares those successful strategies with all of the campuses.
Right.
And that has a process of prevention, of intervention, and a clear process about reporting. And, and one last thing that I believe makes students safer, within this procedure, we defined bullying more clearly than we have in the past. And in the past, and it took a long time for this group to do that, we, we went through and have a lot of definitions, so you can see what are things that aren't acceptable, because we have not calibrated what the one person from another thinks bullying is. And until we can really identify when bullying is occurring, we can't begin to stop it in the way that we need to.
I'm gonna approve all of this item.
Any further discussion, other than to say thank you to, to the task force, since your leadership, Dr. Meyer?
I could say one last thing, just to, it's one reference point that has consolidated a lot of different definitions and considerations for scenarios. So you're gonna see for the first time a discussion of cyberbullying here, as well as the physical bullying.
Yeah.
As well as the reporting processes, even graduation sanctions. So it's a walk through many, many different items.
I want to just thank Nellie Meyer and her staff, and all the other members of the Safe Schools Task Force, and Superintendent Bill Koba, who's attended many of the meetings of the task force, to try to figure out, you know, it's one thing to pass a policy to say, don't do it. It's another thing to put in place some specific action plans to try to support kids, and make sure that the follow-up is there from the staff. Thank you.
Okay, I move items G2 and 3.
Well, let's vote on F3.
I already voted.
Please vote on F3.
Okay. Can I move items G2 and 3, please?
What about G1?
Oh, mine is missing.
G1, 2, 3, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
I move item I1.
Okay, is there a second?
The back page.
Yes, I second.
Second.
It's the, okay, item I1, Salk.
Environment and Park Report.
Okay, please vote. Okay, and so we're down to our monthly update from HR and Finance. Yeah, we did.
Yeah, he wasn't here, we did.
Yeah. I wanted to hear him read it.
For, for Superintendent Finance.
Yeah, that's a, good, good point. We've got, we've got the written report, so just what do you need to draw our attention to? Mr. Jackson?
You have the report.
Yes.
That's it.
Nothing that you?
Nothing. I think, first, I want to thank the HR Division and, and the teachers that were patient with us. Did a great job.
Yeah.
We still have a few vacancies that are lingering out there.
Yeah.
But we are, we're working on it.
Yeah.
It is always challenging around this time of year, so.
Great work.
You have the report, and that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And then Mr. Little, same, same thing. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
We reformatted the report, so it's, it's now about 21 pages long. We hope that you have all the information you need. We have school information in here, we have information by area, we have two different views, the budget and fund balance view and the cash balance view, and we'll go into more detail at the next meeting.
Could you just direct us to the cash balance view?
Sure. If you're looking at the slides, the cash balance view would be, flipping through here, starts on page seven, and then goes through about page 10. So we have seven through 10 are all cash. And we basically look at just three different views of the cash projection. So one is the total general fund on page seven, and then page eight is the more, the view you're more traditionally used to seeing, which is the transcash flow. And we note there that the April balance, which last time you saw was about three and a half million, is up to eight million, and we list some reasons in your report for that, and I'd be happy to talk about those. And then the page nine just shows you the cash view if mid-year cuts were implemented. You can see that in April, we're very close to zero in that case. And then page 10 gives you a year-over-year comparison of cash. So we really tried to give you multiple views of, of both the fund balance perspective and the cash perspective. And we did add, in the report itself, there's quite a bit of narrative.
Yeah.
So we'll bring back the next report.
Okay.
And go into detail.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Little? If not, thank you, Mr. Little. Okay, and we have no non-agenda item public testimony left, so we are adjourned.